I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Tiverton Town Council Tuesday, November 12, 2019. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you?
No call. Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Karp.
Present.
Counselor DiMederos.
Present.
President Hilton.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Driggs.
Present. The consent agenda. Item A, approval of town council minutes, October 21, 2019, special meeting on October 28, 2019, executive session. B, acknowledgement, receipt of minutes from boards and commissions committees, one set of minutes from the Tiverton Prevention Coalition, one set from the Tiverton Open Space Commission, three from the planning board, and one from the cemetery commission. Acknowledged receipt of reports. Number one, the town administrator, police and fire department overtime reports. Number two, town administrator department monthly reports, October 2019. Item D, acknowledged receipt of correspondence, Town of Johnston Resolution of the Town Council Regarding E-911 Services. And item E, approval of tax assessor abatement. Would anyone like to pull any items from the consent agenda?
I would. I'd like to pull A2, executive session, and B3, planning board.
Anyone else?
Madam President.
Yes, John.
Motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Madam President.
Yes, John.
I'd like to make a motion to take, to waive council policy and take the items Counselor Cook pulled off the consent agenda out of order and now.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
I can't hear what he said. Out of order.
We're going to take them. We're going to take them now.
Oh, okay.
If you're ready.
Sure.
Okay. Counselor Cook?
Gio, is it difficult to talk about executive sessions in the public, the minutes?
I'm talking about the open part.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
Okay. October 28th, executive session. Reason for session was questionable. Open session, it says Counselor Edwards' motion to direct the solicitor and town administrator to negotiate a contract with West Place Kennel. I was wondering if the violation of what was cited as reason for executive session, which is potential litigation, doesn't say anything about adding this new information, which also talks about what we talked about in executive session, which is kind of weird. Also, there's a motion with no second. I mean, it's a motion. I don't know what that's all about. And it's not on the agenda anywhere to discuss a negotiation for a contract with West Place. And I'm beginning to wonder if this even should have been an executive session. I think the whole thing should have been an open session so that people could know what was going on, but that's my opinion because of what occurred during this session. I was unhappy as to what went on in it, how it happened, and anyway. What do you have to say, Solicitor? Anything at all?
You know, I don't certainly want to discuss anything that was in executive session. I think as a practical matter, I think you make a fair point that the minutes, well, I guess I have two thoughts. One is that in the executive session minutes, we have a motion that was outside of executive session. So I think really that'd be more appropriate in the meeting minutes that we don't have in front of us yet. Because once you leave executive session, you're no longer looking at the executive session minutes. So I don't think that line that Counselor Edwards' motion to direct, I don't think that's actually appropriate on here. I think there should be an adjournment of executive session, and then that should stop, and then anything that's discussed, including the adjournment motion that's below, should show up in the open meeting minutes. So that just is a practical matter for the clerk. I think that's the better way to do the minutes. To Counselor Cook's point on that motion, I think that's right. There was a motion. I don't see any second, I don't see any votes, so I'm assuming it just died on the vine. That can be reflected in the regular minutes. If that was the case, I wasn't here, so.
No, so, just if I may clarify for the Solicitor. We acted under advice of the assistant Solicitor, and we followed his direction as far as when to make the motion and so on and so forth. So I just want to make sure that that's on the record, that it was under advice of council.
That's fine. But these minutes don't reflect that, so I'm just going off what it says here.
And I seconded that motion, and I'm not sure why that's not reflective in here.
Yeah, so that would probably need a correction before, not before these were approved. For today, I would take that and the adjournment motion off of this, and then you can approve it without those two things. I would direct the clerk to include whatever the accurate line is on the meeting minutes that you'll probably consider next time you meet for the open session. But then my only other question is, if you had a motion with a vote for something that wasn't on the agenda, did you also move to add that to the agenda? Because that would have been necessary in order to have that.
Again, acting under advice of the assistant Solicitor, you'd have to take that up with him.
I can certainly take it up with him, and maybe before the next meeting, I can clarify as to what his thoughts are on that.
That's what he told us.
I don't think, for tonight's purposes, it doesn't matter because you're going to take it off this. It's not appropriately on these minutes. I don't know what his theory would be for how we do that without having it on the agenda.
Yeah, I mean, again, you can, like I said, I think you should take that up with him and, you know.
I will. Happy to.
That would probably help clarify things, and that way, at least the general public understands that we're not doing something we shouldn't be doing.
No, no, and I think it's.
We're taking it under advice of council. I want to make sure that that's clear.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think, you know, there's no sense that it wasn't out and, you know, the record was made, it was just made in the wrong spot.
Well, potentially it was. You also might want to speak with the Solicitor about the nature of the discussion before you.
I understand.
Determine.
No, no, believe me, I'm making no determinations. I think that, now that I understand the context, I know what I can ask him, but I, again, for tonight's purposes, I don't think, whatever that context is, that vote outside of executive session should not be on these minutes. It should be on the open session minutes.
And, but, just to be clear, I believe our past practice has always been to include any votes that were taken, because we don't take votes in executive session. We have to take the votes in public. That traditionally, this is new, our minutes have always been done this way, that any votes that were taken.
Relevant to.
Relevant to executive session, which we have to take in public when we come out of the room and take them here, they've traditionally always been at the end of the executive session.
I understand. And I'm not saying that anyone would hold you to fault for that. I just think that, from the way I view it, I think having those in the open session minutes, since it was an open session vote, would be more accurate.
Madam President.
Yes, John.
If I could just add one more item. For future, if we have questions on minutes like this, and it's a crossover between the assistant Solicitor and now our town Solicitor being here, it would be helpful in advance if maybe Counselor Cook or whomever brings them off of the agenda would speak to the Solicitor or give them a heads up that it was coming, so at least that way our Solicitor can be prepared for the discussion.
She did mention that to me. She called and mentioned the issue, and I didn't understand the other Counselor's opinion on this, and of course, I didn't want to create a rolling quorum by having that conversation with multiple parties, but she did actually give me a heads up that this was going to be a concern of hers.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Cook, your next item.
All right. Going through the planning board minutes, just wanted to make, just to read the, seems to be some confusion as to who did what when for the solar ordinance. It says the town council on March 12, 2018, adopted Article 24, Solar Photovoltaic System Development, and on November 26, 2018, the town council, the new town council, had to repeal the ordinance and requested the planning board to redraft the article of 24. I just want to make it clear that it's the planning board's responsibility to put forth a solar ordinance, and two particular people got blamed for the whole thing, and I just don't think that was right, so it is a matter of record. Anyway, to move on, I just wanted to make, looking through this, I just wanted to make sure that we have a heads up for just.
Madam President, if I could ask for some clarification, Counselor Cook.
What's the matter?
Where in that paragraph is there blame assigned to somebody?
What are you talking about? Here?
Yeah, you just.
It isn't in here.
It is not in here?
I don't think so.
So it's not pertinent to discussion? I'm just curious, because you just said that some, that two people were blamed for something, and it's not reflected in what you just read?
Two former, there were seven of us, but two former counselors were blamed for not having a solar ordinance. We would all be responsible for that.
But it's not a matter of record because it's not mentioned in these minutes, correct?
Correct.
I'm just trying to follow along with the discussion, that's all.
I think she's just, if I may speak, I think by inference, she is just making clear that there had been a solar ordinance. It was rescinded by the new town council, but at that time, it was put into the planning board to come up with a solution, and that's all that's happened. And she's just stating that as a fact.
So there's no inaccuracies in these minutes? I'm just, I want to make sure I'm following the discussion.
Inaccuracy is who was blamed for not having a solar ordinance.
But where in the minutes is there blame?
Hold on a second. But Mrs. Cook, we're simply reviewing the planning board's minutes. If there's an inaccuracy in these minutes, then that's what, point that out, but other than that, that's what we're doing. We're either accepting these minutes as they're written, or we're not accepting these minutes as.
Okay. I also want to go over. I just want to make sure that, just sort of a heads up, that it says that we, there's a recommendation from Mrs. Eva that we might have a workshop with the town council before the public hearing. I just wanted to give a heads up on that, and at that time, I guess we can discuss some of the other things I found on 1022 meeting, and that's all I wanted to bring.
Well, I think one of the issues, as I recall reading, also that they, the planning board specifically indicated that it's going to be the town council that they're going to look to for guidance for the amount of acreage that could be used. That's in their minutes, so I think.
In the cap.
We just wanted to give a heads up that this may be something that the town council's going to have to think about. Thank you.
Okay. In that case, do I have a motion to accept items?
A2.
Item A2 and B3.
So moved.
Second.
Second and discussion.
Yes, John.
Given the inconsistencies in the executive committee or the executive session minutes, should we not accept that today, Mr. Solicitor?
You can accept it with those two lines, Mr. Cook.
Right. I was just going to say.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's reflected in the motion.
I have a motion, second. All in favor? I don't believe we had anybody sign up for the public forums, so we'll go on to public presentations, announcements, and comments. Tax Assessor Dave Robert, brief overview of the 2020 full revaluation.
Good evening, Mr. Robert. Good evening, Town Council. Yes, very brief. So a couple weeks ago, the town council approved awarding the contract to Northeast Revaluation Company. They do have a contract that they presented to the town. That has been forwarded to the town Solicitor. He has reviewed that, sent it back to me with some corrections and updates. I provided that copy to the revaluation company. They are fine with that, so they're ready to sign. The town will end up signing. The work is going to begin tomorrow, so they are going to be out in the field starting tomorrow. They are going to be in the Fogland Beach Shore Road area. Residents in the town council, they will be updated on a weekly basis through the website. On the website, I'm going to have information as far as where the data collectors will be, and I'm also going to have an image utilized in our GIS database of the area that they will be in. All of the data collectors, they presented me with a list of their information regarding name, motor vehicle, license plate. They have multiple cars. If there's a spouse and they want to use a different car, all of those vehicles are being registered with the police department. So if any resident has a question, they can contact my office directly or contact the police department, and they will have a listing there of the people out in the field. The gentlemen that are working on the project, I've actually known for several years, so I can speak for their professionalism. They will be going door to door, knocking, looking for information as far as interior information and exterior. They will walk around the houses, take measurements. The revaluation is expected, as far as the data collection portion, is to probably last into May or June of next year. They are going to work from the southern portion of town to the northern. And again, if anyone has questions, they can always contact my office.
Madam President.
Yes, John.
Just one question for the assessor. What is the actual process for them? Because I'm assuming they're going to have to gain entry into the house. Is there going to be advanced notification of the days that they're going to be in a specific area or going to a specific residence, or are they just going to hope for luck of the draw when they knock on somebody's door?
Luck of the draw. So the process will be that they will go into a neighborhood. Again, I will update the website as far as what areas they should be in. They will go to the door, knock on the door. If someone's there, they'll explain exactly why they're there, explain the process. If no one is home, they are going to leave behind a notation for them to give the data collector or the revaluation company a phone call to schedule an inspection. And also, it's important to note that all of the data collectors that's out in the field, that's going to be representing Northeast Appraisal, they're wearing red jackets or sweaters, so they're easily identifiable. So if you see someone walking around with their red jacket, they're part of the crew. In addition to the crew, just so the residents know, once the data collectors are in a particular area, a field reviewer will drive by each of the homes just to make sure that when the data collector submits that information to the reviewer, they'll drive on by to make sure that everything seems accurate at that point.
Thank you.
Dave, do they carry identification with them?
They do.
Okay.
Yep. It's a photo ID that has the town logo on it and their information as far as their name and that they're working for Northeast Appraisal.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Robert.
Thank you.
Next up, Stu Gilfillan of the Recreation Commission, newly elected Chair of the Recreation Commission, I believe, as well as the Chair of the Town Farm Playground Committee.
Yeah, I get all the fun. Town Council, just so you're aware, I'll be back up in front of you at the next meeting. We have a public session that we've promoted for Thursday at the library from 6:00 to 8:00, so we're collecting information that will pretty much, we'll keep the surveys open a little bit beyond that, but that's our last major information selection opportunity and feedback opportunity. So I'll be back up in front of you at the next town council meeting with a application, a copy of the grant to review. You'll get it as part of your packet and your backup at that time, so that's why you don't have more at the moment. I do have some sort of high-level information, but wanted to give kind of a rundown on where we're at and what we're going through and answer any questions you may have. So on September 30, the town council created the committee, the Town Farm Recreation Committee, and then we kind of jumped into it right from there. Been meeting about every two weeks since then, which in addition to other meetings, we've got some great volunteers, so scheduling has been fun. I do want to extend just a quick thanks to the town staff, Jan and Rick and the others. Those guys have been phenomenal at helping us stay on the straight and narrow and give feedback where need be, and we're really fortunate with the committee that we have. We sent out two different surveys. One was for the playgrounds. So if you look at Town Farm where the existing playground footprint is, we're going to look to replace that with another playground with multiple sets of resources for both younger and older children. On the other end of the playground, right next to where the tennis courts are, there's a perception out there that we could potentially replace that with a fitness park, something that's happened in a lot of different communities. So we did two different surveys to gauge feedback from people on both. For the playground survey that went out first, it went to all the PTOs, it went up on social media, went out through a number of different channels. We had 339 submissions to that, and just as a data point, the number one selection for theme was a forest or a nature type theme from residents. On the fitness park side, we've had 92 respondents on the digital one. We have a number of print surveys that we have not accounted for. We will include those as well before we finish with the data. An interesting data point, again, 81% of people said that they would use Town Farm more if there was a fitness park. So just interesting anecdotal information from the data points from people. I will happily share and will bring in on Thursday all of the info that has been collected and all of the individual responses. My personal favorite so far was the individual who suggested that we should add a beer garden to the playground. We're not adding a beer garden. So there is a public forum at the library on the 14th this Thursday. We've invited Andrew Wade, who is the Recreation Director in Jamestown, to come speak. Anybody that's seen what Jamestown did, it's one of, if not the, best playgrounds in the state. In addition to that, Andrew is on the review committee for the DEM grants and has been providing insight and a lot of great feedback along the way. So he is going to come and present what their process was like. It'll give him an opportunity to see our process firsthand, and he's been giving us feedback, like I said, pretty regularly. We'll also have a first shot at renderings based on the feedback that we do have, fully acknowledging that it will change, but we're firm believers that if people can see what we're potentially doing, it's easier to conceptualize. So we're taking the feedback that we have and trying to give them something to look at. As we move forward, the grant is due December 11 at 3:00 PM. Nobody's counting. There are a couple different types of grants that the DM offers. The one that we're targeting is the Large Recreational Development Grant. That's up to a $400,000 grant with a 20% match. In the budget currently, there is $50,000 for Town Farm, so we would need to come up with additional $30,000 in VIK. We feel confident we can do that. We have started looking into, through a couple different conversations, how we could handle the remaining portion of it. Some of it can be done as in-kind, some of it can through sponsorship. We actually have a, had a $3,000 contribution from Tiverton Power that already came in through Town's channel. So people without us really doing a big push are already starting to get behind us. We're excited about what this will bring. Action items, we've been playing email tag with the Arts Council. Do want to connect with them? There was a recommendation made by a former counselor to connect with them, and it made sense to follow up on that. We need to do a full site survey. Rick and I have been discussing how best to do that, and we do need to take a look at, in the long term, how are we going to come up with the right vendor for this project? So an RFP to make sure we get the right equipment and it goes through all the proper channels. So we're trying to make sure we check all the boxes here, and we follow the proper process. Really pleased with the way that we're moving. It is a very tight timeline for what we're trying to do, but we feel confident in what we're likely to accomplish, so. Questions?
Is there anything we can do to be of assistance?
More coffee?
All right.
No, I think as, and I, like I said, I will circulate information. We'll have it after the Thursday meeting. If people have suggestions, feedback, if you can attend that meeting on Thursday, I would welcome having anybody there just to observe. You know, I think for us, we really want to be as transparent, as open as possible. This is something that it's a community project, and we want to make sure that the community is heard.
Something sticking in my, excuse me, stick, I have a cold. Something's, excuse me.
It's okay.
Sticking in my mind that prior to submitting the grant, there has to be a public hearing put on by the town council. Is that factored into this timeline and stuff?
Yes. Yep. So that's part of the reason I'm going to be coming back to you as well, but at this particular time. We wanted to make sure we had a dedicated public session. We're giving a full hour for feedback. I didn't think that was appropriate to do here, but again, at the next opportunity, before we have to submit, we'll come back to you.
I think, as I recall, it was after you had the grant prepared, come before the town council, and it gets reviewed and stuff, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam President, Renee Jones has a question. I know you can't see it because of the column.
Sure.
I just had a quick question. An occupational therapist for kids. I was just wondering, what does Jamestown do for accessibility for the handicap?
So they do have some equipment that is specifically accessible. If you go down there, there's a couple of swings that are set up that way, and there are a couple other places, but I invite you to come Thursday and ask Andrew directly to.
Okay.
Yep. I have a copy, if you're interested, I have a copy of the plan.
I just wanted to raise that point because you hadn't mentioned it.
Nope, and it's a very good one. It is accounted for in the survey. If anybody has not taken the survey, they're both posted on the Town Hall website, and there are specific pieces of equipment as well as open-ended responses that we included, so.
So just to clarify, Stu, when you're back, we will be having a public hearing for this and a vote, and you will need the minutes from the public hearing.
As part of the submission.
And the vote as part of the submission for the grant.
That's correct.
I would also just add, Jan makes a good point, or just mentioned something to me. If the council does participate in other forums, please recall that you can't participate as the council. Don't roll into quorum issues or anything like that. I would advise to observe and save your commentary for your public hearing.
We've done this before with the beach and other things, so.
Yeah, and I would just offer, it's interesting, as we've looked at the grant, when the notice went out for the grant, the image that they used was actually Grinnell's. So I think that's worth noting here, just as a reference point.
Thank you, Stu. Thank you to your committee for all your hard work. I know that it's a short timeframe, and timeframe, and you're working really diligently. Onto public hearings advertised. Public hearing approval of proposed ordinance amendment, addition of Article III, Businesses, Chapter 22, Section 22, allowing consent agenda approval for certain license renewals. Madam clerk is not here this evening. Jeanne, are you wanting to take this one, or do you think we could? Or Gio?
I'm happy to weigh in if Jeanne would prefer.
That's fine. I have a free vote.
Yeah, I mean, we've talked about this two meetings ago. I've had a chance to review again, and I'm comfortable with the concept. I think this is consistent, as Jan has pointed out previously, with a sort of a lean process and a way to make the town government more efficient. I think that's admirable. My only comment is a practical one. It should not hold up anything, but as a matter of just form, I am adverse to asterisks in ordinances.
I saw that.
And so I would just suggest, I don't believe this requires anything other than a ministerial change when the clerk passes this forward, but simply to put the asterisk line on the very bottom, up after the word is, the town clerk is, and then insert that, and then authorized. That way, it's in the body of the ordinance and not separated out. It's hard to read, it's hard to find. People can get confused by reading a codebook with something set out like that.
Madam President, I have a question too for Gio. I'm concerned that the town clerk, so somebody comes in for a renewal, and how can we be assured that the licensee is in compliance with all applicable provisions of state and local law and has not been issued a warning or subject to a show cause? Would it be advisable that the licensee should have to give an affidavit under penalty of perjury that both those facts are true so that it doesn't fall on the town clerk to ascertain this?
Well, I think the clerk can create a form that would include something like that, and that's.
I think that's essential, because otherwise, how's the town clerk going to make this decision?
Well, I think, well, I think the clerk would be the one that would have noticed on a show cause hearing. I think the clerk's involved in that. So I don't, I don't think that's the difficult, a difficult one.
Okay.
The provisions of state and local law pertaining to the license, those tend to be enumerated in the authorizing legislation, so the clerk, you know, even today, for a liquor license renewal, will get a tax good standing, will get a corporate good standing, will do all the things that that lays out, and I think clerks around the state are generally familiar with what that checklist is and does that today when she brings you, when she brings you items for votes.
I was just going to say that. I think Nancy does all of this before bringing it to us anyway.
Yeah, I don't think that, yeah, I think that's a great point.
This is nothing new.
I don't think that changes anything necessarily. You're right, it is a potential minefield, but it doesn't change anything compared to what you have today.
Right.
I think if I'm not mistaken, Jan, eventually, as we move to this lean program, there is an electronic tracking of all of these things. In the interim for now, when they do license renewals in the office, you know, there's a folder and everybody's associated papers, as well as their approvals. In other words, if the police chief doesn't have a problem, the fire chief doesn't have a problem, if this license is, that license. So for now, it's somewhat paper-based, but I believe the goal is eventually that this will become electronic. Jan?
That's correct, and one of the results will be that you actually more likely will have the results earlier rather than later, and you'll have fewer instances where you have this subject to all legal requirements, because all the legal requirements will have been checked off by then, which is made a lot easier through the electronic system. Now, prior to the electronic system, such as the one that we're using in the building office, prior to that being adopted, the plan is actually to start doing more or less the same with emails, so that an application comes in, it automatically gets emailed to the various departments that need to check. And so there is, in a way, more attention being paid to that getting done in a timely fashion than we currently can.
I think the other thing to keep in mind about this is that we always, as the council, while we're approving this on the consent agenda, we could ask for it to be presented in a format that had, you know, check marks next to it or something so that we could see that, you know, everything that they're supposed to have is there, rather than just the list of names, rather than getting all the individual pieces of paper for every single license.
I think the idea ultimately is that you wouldn't get a whole packet with all kinds of, but you would have one application, and there can be further discussion whether that should have attached to it a checklist with all the checks, or whether all of us get very good at just going online and checking it out, because it's right there, and everybody can check it.
I just have one concern. During this process of the renewals of all the businesses in town, it says here we wouldn't have a public hearing if this was done, and the public hearing, I don't know if that's such a good idea to circumvent that. I think it's sort of an announcement, like, "Hear ye, hear ye, these businesses are coming for renewal. It's on the agenda. People can come speak if there's a problem with it that maybe hasn't been reported." And they have a right to speak about a business in a public forum. So this would take that away, because it wouldn't be on the agenda. How would that be done?
Well, there's not a public hearing necessarily for license renewals now. It shows up on the agenda, but it's not something because they're renewals that's listed as a public hearing. I mean, they're just on the agenda.
I don't know. I think they're listed like public hearing, are they not? That you can get up and say something.
I suppose if the council wanted to let people speak, they could, but it's not a requirement, and in past, we haven't had a public hearing or asked the public to get up and speak. We simply read the long list of names. I mean, when we do these renewals every year, there's batches and batches of them. We read the long list of names, and Nancy, you know, has an enormously thick packet for us with all the backup data. They would be on the consent agenda. We would individually, as counselors, certainly have the ability, if we had a concern of any one of them, to, you know, take something off of the consent agenda, or if, you know, a member of the public brought something forward and had an issue, we could certainly do that. I think that Nancy's objective in this was simply to limit that extraordinary amount of paper that comes with these annual renewals every year, as well as, you know, speed up our process so that we're not reading through, you know, an hour and a half's worth of names to do license renewals that are very routine, and that the Town Clerk's office has already been through all of the necessary process to ensure that their licenses can be created.
Well, I do understand that, but I just think it gives the public a list of them. They're allowed to get up, for the public to be able to say something, but they don't, if there isn't a problem, there isn't a problem. But for us to have a list of it, would the public know that it's not on the agenda? Would it be on the agenda?
It would appear on the consent agenda. So the names will all appear on the agenda, they'll just be on the consent agenda.
So we would just say we accept the consent agenda as is? Or allow people to?
Unless the council.
Unless the council member had a concern, they could raise it, like we've done before.
But I'm talking about the public. I mean, what if the public has a concern that we don't know about?
Donna, they could always put it on the public forum, so when they see this, so when they see this list, they could always put it on the list that they have a concern with this business and would like to speak about it. And then when the president sees this list, make sure that that.
I'm just trying to protect the public's rights.
Yeah, but that would be a way to do it. So if Trish sees the list and they have a name of a business, Trish could pull that off the consent agenda so people could speak about it at the public forum.
I would like that to be part of the procedure, that there's definitely a list that the public can look at, actually put their name on a piece of paper to speak on that business. I don't want that to be circumvented. I think it's important for the public to have input on the businesses in town.
Gio, isn't there a list that people can sign up before the meeting to speak?
And I think it's worth just reinforcing number five in the ordinance that this requires, as written, requires that the Town Clerk provide a list of licenses being issued on a council agenda. So Nancy, or Jeannie, or whoever it is, will have to make a very, you know, might be three pages of agenda items, but those will all show up, and the public will have a chance for however many hours they have noticed the agenda to see all those names. And if they have a concern with, you know, somebody's pizza parlor, or whatever it might be, they'll have seen that name up in front of the council. Now, it'll all be consent, and it won't come up unless they go out of their way to suggest to a council that there's a concern, but they will have seen it in a public notice.
Trish? Should we add something to five that could, if, something to that effect? If the public has concerns, they may put this business on the public forum, just so the public knows that in this procedure, that that's how it could be done. So it'll be on the consent agenda, listed on the consent agenda, and if anyone from the public has concerns, they could put that.
You could just add a comma after the word "decision," sorry, after the word "review" in number five, and say, "to allow for council review, comma, and for potential public input."
Does that sound good, Donna?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I protect the public to have their say about a business. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, John?
Well, I just, two very quick points. Number one, I think it'd be great for us to get to the public hearing portion of this discussion. And number two, as far, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Solicitor, but if, you know, resident has an issue with a business, there's nothing preventing them from coming in front of this council at any meeting to bring that to our attention, or bringing it to the attention of the clerk prior to the license being renewed. I mean, we know when they happen every single year, so, you know, I don't think that making this a public forum that's going to drag on ad nauseam is really going to change anything. The public still has the right to come in front of this council and petition this body as its representative body.
I get what you're saying, counselor, but I just want to make sure that there's something in place where they can sign something. If no one signs anything, I guess it's not a problem, but there should be something for them that they feel that they can get up and speak, because it's really not a hearing with this type of a system. So if they want to put their name on something to speak on a business, then so be it. But you don't necessarily, it would be nice that we let people get up, but you don't necessarily, if it's not a hearing, have someone get up and just speak.
Well, let me ask one follow-up question for the solicitor, then. In the event, hypothetically, you know, Joe's Pizza Parlor satisfies all legal requirements, goes through this renewal process with the clerk, is there past precedent that has shown that a counselor on the word of a member of the public is going to hold up that business's license? Is that something that happens regularly at other councils? I'm just curious to what the process may be.
I wouldn't say it happens regularly, but there is certainly a process for that. I, as a matter of curiosity and disclosure, I'm actually involved in a suit against the town of Johnston for doing just that, for a breakfast restaurant that had their license held up to the point where they went out of business. And so it does happen, and certainly in any town, there are those opportunities. Instead of doing the laundry list, one can get pulled out, and if there's a question about a tax bill, or there's a question about a good standing certificate, or whatever it might be, those can get held off for a week or two. In my view, all that means for you is that it's good practice to do this well in advance of the license deadlines. Don't do it two weeks before they need the renewal, do it a month and a half before. So if there is something being held off, you have another council meeting to address it. That's my only advice on that. But no, I think, look, I think you're right, Counselor Edwards. The opportunity remains there, even though this is an abbreviated process. I think if you make that wording change, Counselor Cook, the public will be on the same level of notice as they were under the current system, and under your rules, as they run today, they can sign up, they can contact a counselor, the counselor, for whatever reason, can pull something off the consent agenda and raise that. Maybe it gets voted approved that night, but maybe there's some question that the clerk missed, or that needed to be addressed by the council, and maybe that happens in a future meeting. But I think that's, it's not, you wouldn't be outside the realm of sort of normal operations of councils if you did it that way.
Thank you.
Since this is a public hearing, would anyone from the public like to be heard on this? No takers? Well, in that case.
What are we going to do, Trish?
Well, I actually have a couple of things that I'd like to offer up about this, and then we'll discuss having a vote. Yes, John?
Is the public hearing still open? Because I think we have to ask three times, right? I just want to make sure we're following the process.
Well, I'll make sure I ask a few more times. Anyone from the public? Anybody from the public? In that case, we will close the public hearing.
Thank you.
As far as this goes, you know, my opinion is that we're trying to make life a little simpler for the clerk, for the council, but also for the businesses. And I have to admit, I don't ever remember a time when we've done license renewals, and they take, it takes a long time when they're on the regular agenda, that any member of the public has ever stood up and complained about a business that was getting their license renewed. And I'm not, I'm not sure that, to John's point, that somebody's license can get held up because somebody comes to a council meeting and has a complaint which is yet to have been verified. And if the business meets all of the legal requirements, and the Town Clerk has verified that the business meets all of their legal requirements, I think that the appropriate channel for someone who might have a complaint about a business is to go to the appropriate place in Town Hall and file that complaint, and whether that's with the building official's office, or the zoning office, or the clerk's office. But we've never had public hearings on license renewals. And so it seems to me that if we open up Pandora's box of creating a situation where members of the public can come during somebody's license renewal, and they may have a legitimate complaint, but they may not have a legitimate complaint. They might think they do, but, you know, they may think that there's a zoning violation and there isn't. So I'm inclined to stick with the language that the Town Clerk has put forward, subject to the modification of the asterisk.
We did one time, and we allowed them to follow that policy until November, when we could revisit that issue.
But was that based on a complaint from the public? Or it was an issue that was already?
It was based on both.
Right, but it was.
Complaint, and there was no law or zoning law in effect, so we were addressing.
But that was an issue that was already in front of officials in the town. It wasn't simply a person from the public showed up. It was something that was.
But we did end up extending it for so many months so we could revisit it.
Would there be any way of, how long does it usually take the clerk to get this stuff that she gets?
Well, a lot of it's dependent upon the licensee, the registrar.
Use your microphone.
A lot of it's dependent upon what they're waiting for in terms of the requirements, whether they're waiting for their certifications, you know, what items they need, even their payment.
I guess what I'm thinking is, rather than wait till the night of whenever we put these names down, that we're going to allow them to have a renewal, what if there was a notice posted a little prior to that, that the Town Clerk has received renewal requests from the following businesses? And so people have noticed that that's out there, and it won't hold up. Yeah, I don't know. And I don't know how they do the notice, but it's just a thought.
Isn't there a specific month with all these renewals?
November.
So everybody expires in November? Correct?
At the next meeting. At the next meeting. We will either get these, if we pass this ordinance, we will get them on our, we will get the name of every single business on our consent agenda. If we don't pass this, we will get them on our regular agenda with all the stacks of that.
It's come up the same week, the same month, every single year, and that's when everybody comes up for renewals. So that's a good thing for the public to know. In November, all these licenses come up, every business comes up, unless they've gone out of business or they're planning to. So that's very important, that maybe we could even put on the website, "all businesses get renewed in November," so then everyone would know. That would be a way for the public to know that that's, they should speak up before November. Does that sound good?
List all the businesses?
Yeah. Every business, every business is up for renewal.
No, we don't have to list all the businesses, because it's every business in town that comes up for renewal in November. Every business.
Yeah, it's wrong.
Unless it's a licensed business. Every licensed business, right.
We never answer almost everything.
But that's all we're addressing.
But that's what we're addressing is the licenses.
But that's what we're addressing is every licensed. If they don't have a license, we don't address it.
I mean, that covers everything from gas stations to junkyards to flea markets to everything.
Every business in town gets a renewal in November.
Okay.
So that's when people should have the heads up, that if I have a problem, I should do it before November.
Can we move the question?
That's, I'm wondering if, would someone here like to make a motion?
Motion made to move the question.
We don't have to. I'm asking, would anybody like to make a motion on the proposed ordinance?
I'll make the motion to approve the proposed ordinance amended addition, Article III Businesses, Chapter 22, Section 22, allowing consent agenda approval for certain license renewals, with the change of, on the first sentence, the Town Clerk is authorized to administratively renew any license issued by the, wait a minute.
After clerk, you put the asterisk.
To the extent, okay. I have the arrow there, but I forgot it. To the extent barred by state authorizing statute, if applicable. And I would really like to add to five agenda item to allow for council review and for potential public input.
Second.
Second, yes.
I have a motion in a second. Anybody, any last comments? All in favor? Town Council Sitting as a Board of Licensing, David Leonard Cabral, 60 Reno Street, Fall River, Massachusetts, requests approval for private detective license. Still don't know if Mr. Cabral is here.
So, Gio, I have a question on this. I'm just not understanding. When I looked up, he said he's applying, I have no problem. I just am interested in, he cites Rhode Island General Law 554, but that says you have to get a local licensing authority where principal place of business is located. And his principal place of business is Fall River. So I'm just sort of curious why, how and why Tiverton gets involved in, and as I said, I don't particularly have a problem with it, I just don't understand how he ends up before us.
Because I think he's asking for Rhode Island licensing.
Yeah, each state has a separate licensing requirement.
But our licensing under Rhode Island General Law is in the town of your principal place of business, and he cites his business address in Fall River.
Yeah, my assumption, well, when I saw this, was that he would have a Rhode Island office or operation.
He doesn't have a list of one. That's my question.
Madam President, maybe their police chief could give us a little info on that. He may be familiar with some of these private investigators.
He may have a job he's doing here right now.
Possibly, Chief.
Sorry, Chief, to put you on the spot, but I just figure you probably know more about it than we do.
Is not here.
I know we've had, good evening. I know in the past that we have entertained out-of-state people who don't have a business in our community, a private investigator. people who don't have a business in our community, a private investigator's license here in Tiverton. We have entertained that before. I have not seen any of the backup on this gentleman, so I'm kind of speaking, shooting from the hip a little bit, but I know historically, when we have approved private investigator licenses, they don't necessarily need to have a place of business in town.
Huh, okay.
But is the law saying you do?
I don't know.
I think sometimes what happens too, if, and maybe this is the case with this gentleman, if I have a private investigating license or business in town, this gentleman can work for me under, but he has to be licensed, even though he might be listing his residence. Again, shooting from the hip again, not knowing his application and not having seen anything.
And I also, this is just speculation, and so take it for what it's worth. But with, with, like any Rhode Island general laws, there are laws that are on the books but are unenforceable. And to prevent somebody from earning a living because of their state of residence would probably be violative of the U.S. Constitution, and they shouldn't be allowed to, you know, in some cases you can, insurance companies and other specially regulated industries. I'm not sure this comes under that, and I think that perhaps you can't force somebody to have a residence or a business, or prevent them from working in your state just because you want them to lay down roots here. And I think that's probably what the statute had originally contemplated. I'm not sure that's enforced.
Talk to the bar exam.
And we have a lot of detectives.
In that case, Mr. Solicitor, do you advise that we can go forward with this? I mean, it's, I, in the absence of the town clerk, who obviously put this forward on the agenda with all the backup, and she may be well aware of how this law works in Rhode Island, having, you know, done private detective licenses many, many times. But the question now is, do we consider this tonight, or do we need clarification?
I'm happy to talk to the clerk and look at the statute, and make some inquiries as to whether there's some, something that would tell us that the statute is not followed for good reason. I don't, if he's not here, the applicant's not here, I don't have a sense, I don't know from the clerk's office whether this is pressing for some reason. I don't know if the chief has any thought, any knowledge of that.
I have a question, Trish.
Yes, ma'am.
Patrick, we do have detectives that we've given license to that live in Farver, or
live in Portsmouth, or live in Massachusetts. Is that correct? Because I can, I can think of two offhand.
Yes.
And we've done this before. This has never come in question before, and I do know, I can think of two right off the top of my head, that we've given license to that live in Farver.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be surprised if it wasn't fine.
In that case, can we take this up? Or do you want to wait?
Could I just ask that you move it down the agenda, a couple items? I'd just like to look at something quickly before I...
In that case, can I have a motion to move this, to move this item to the end of the agenda?
So moved, second.
Second? All in favor?
Your choice.
I like the way we did it.
All right. We don't have any appointments and resignations. We don't have any bids and requests for proposals onto general business. Item A, Town Administrator writes me a ratification of employment agreement with Joseph R. Kaufman to serve as part-time zoning officer as of November 1, 2019.
Thank you, you have in your packet the information on Joe, and also an explanation. He actually has been working here for quite some time, as he was working for Municipal Co-Consulting, that was doing a lot of the work in the building and zoning office, so he's familiar with the place and the people and the responsibilities. And I recommend that you ratify the employment agreement. He will be part-time, working two days a week in this office.
Madam President?
Yes, John?
Can I make a motion to approve the administrator's request to ratify the employment agreement with Joseph R. Kaufman to serve as part-time zoning officer as of November 1, 2019?
Second.
A motion in a second, discussion?
Yeah, my memory might be wrong, but did, did we say that they would work three days a week? Is that what we said when we first developed this?
I don't believe so. Well, maybe it was a number of hours or something. It works out to...
Well, it was a number of hours, but it was three days.
To full days.
I think they were going to be here so that they'd be accessible. I might be wrong.
I don't know. I think when it was, I don't know.
And is the per-hour fee based on what a zoning officer would pro-rata, what he would get if it was full-time?
Correct. It's getting full-time now.
So, I will say, I did go back, and I think I looked at the last one, it was a 20-hour work week. So it was a 20-hour work week in the prior, in the prior contract. This says a 19-hour work week, and I'm a little concerned about two days a week and 19 hours. So how does that work out?
Well, they can be long days. I would need to look, it's up to 19 hours, and I think the 19 and 20 has to do with, you go over that, that it's no longer part-time. So I'm not sure that there was a, I don't think there would have been an expectation of three days per week, because you would almost by definition be, well, unless you work shorter hours, I guess.
I think it was.
I think that's what it was. It was three days, and I think it was six hours.
I thought it was hourly, it was an hourly rate that he had came to us with, and that's what it was broken down to. That's where you get the hours from. The short of it is that in our experience, and in the opinion of the building official as well, this will work for, at least for the time being. I mean, certainly you can argue that there's a whole lot more work to be done in the zoning area. Not everybody wants us to do that, but right now, this would cover it. And if there's a need to expand it, I think we should come back to the council.
So, so in all likelihood, it will be more like a 16-hour a week position?
It may well be, although he has worked long hours, and so has people of Municipal Co-Consultors, that they just work extended hours sometimes.
So I understand. So the maximum would be 19, but more likely it's probably...
Between 16 and 19, yeah.
Okay. In that case, anybody else? Any other comments? A motion in a second, correct? All in favor? Next, Treasurer Denise Sarette, estimated fiscal year 19 transfer to cover for streetlight shortages.
Good evening. Excuse me? Yeah. If you recall, I had been mentioning this for several months, that they still have not worked out the billing issue between National Grid and Prism. However, our last update was, you know, a promise that it'll be coming down in the next month or so, but we're getting too close to the end of the fiscal year and wrapping up the audit. So I wanted to make sure that I set aside some funds for what I believed. I did my best guessing what it was going to cost. We still have a potential rebate coming as well, so I'm pretty confident that this $40,000 is going to be enough. I just looked through the fiscal 19 final numbers and found an account that had enough to transfer in one swoop over to Streetlight, so that if the bill does come, or when the bill does come, I can pay it, and it'll come out of the correct fiscal year. That's really my goal here.
So what happens to the group, group health account that gets $40,000 taken out of it?
This is fiscal year 19. So this is last year's money. This is not budget we're working on. There wasn't, we had a balance left in the group health insurance. Yes.
And actually, you can explain that as well, but there has been a history of expectations that health insurance costs would go way up, and that has been a lot less than expected at the time. So then, in fact, we had money left in those accounts. That's beginning to turn around, by the way, just in case people are, you know, all optimistic. It's beginning to go up again, but it certainly went up a lot less than at one point was projected and therefore budgeted.
And not only that, we were not at full staff last year. We had quite a few vacancies, so what had been expected to be, to be spent, wasn't. So the bottom line is, I wanted to set something aside for the invoices that hopefully will be coming soon. Anything that's left over will go back to the general fund.
So we're actually taking this out of the general fund? Because you've already completed that is...
No, we have not closed the books.
Oh, okay, that's what I...
Well, the final audit hasn't been, and I've discussed this with them, and they thought it was reasonable. I mean, the money's got to come from somewhere to pay those bills.
Right, because we haven't closed the books. Okay. Denise, I do have one question on this ongoing billing thing between National Grid and Prism. Is there anything that this solicitor can do to help with this? I mean, is there any...
We've been staying on top of it.
I know you have.
Our office, Jan's been staying on top of it. I think it's been, quite frankly, they bit off more than they could chew with converting all of the municipalities, and they definitely focused more on the larger municipalities, and kind of working out the bugs there. So I don't know if Geo could do anything, but...
I think it's generally very difficult to tell National Grid to do something different from what they're doing.
My only, my only suggestion, honestly, you know, aside from sending some nasty lawyer letter that will get you zero, if not, if not have a negative impact, would, would be at some point to raise this issue with the Public Utilities Commission, and to indicate that, you know, in these types, you know, National Grid doesn't like doing this, right? It's not in their financial interest to do these things.
Right.
So the PUC might be, you know, appreciative of some correspondence from the council once this is complete, explaining what you had to go through. Other than that, I think, you know, legal involvement would just make it worse.
The only, we're not the only ones.
So we're not.
So, you know, and they've worked with us, but it's just taken so long, and we've given them everything they've asked for, but you can only do so much.
Madam President?
Yes, John?
Yeah, can I make a motion to approve the transfers as requested by the town treasurer?
Do I have a second?
Second. No, I have a question.
Not discussion.
All right, no discussion.
Sir Cook, you have a question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was just curious about the, this, this extra money in the 20, was that last year's budget, do you say?
Yes. We're working off of...
Do we have a special account or something? Doesn't it go in the general fund, like when this...
Well, I'm going to make an entry to accrue the funds into an accrued expense account on the balance sheet, and then when the bills come in, I will be able to have the funds to pay them.
Okay, thank you.
So if I don't do that, and the bills come in, we'll be looking for it in fiscal year 20 budget, and it's not there.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
In that case, there's a motion in a second, all in favor? Now, don't go anywhere.
I know.
Madam Treasurer, because the next item is, the Treasurer Denise Sarette requests approval and authorization of council president to sign engagement letter for Haig, Sahadi and Company PC to audit the financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2019.
This is a typical engagement letter that we sign every year. The audit's almost done, but it usually comes at the end. I don't know why, but this year, they have asked that the town council sign the letter. So...
Who usually signs the letter?
Myself and the town administrator.
Must be watching us on TV.
Hmm? I am no longer on here.
Yeah, I thought, yeah, I don't ever remember signing this, so I thought, okay, I thought that was odd.
And I see that Jan has signed this, this, Geo, do you need to look at this? Or did you want to...
Look at it, it's free.
It's fine. In that case, any other questions or comments?
Yes, you may.
Does the school department pay for part of that?
Yes.
So how come we don't have anything to say about it?
About what? The engagement letter?
Fire and everything.
I, I think Jerry has asked me that next year, when we go out to bid, that the school department have a more active role in it.
This isn't a bid, this is...
This is a bid process every three years, so we'll be going out...
This isn't the bid process this time at all.
No, no.
So, yes, and I do remember Jerry asking that last year or the year before.
Madam President?
Yes, John?
Can I make a motion to approve the, yeah, to approve the authorization of the council president to sign the engagement letter for Haig, Sahadi and Company PC to audit our financial statements for year end June 20, 30, 2019?
Second. Motion in a second? No other discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
Okay. Counselor Edwards, discussion and possible action of proposed modifications to town council governance policy.
Just scrolling down to it. Thank you. So as we discussed two meetings ago, the topic of the council governance policy came up. I volunteered to make some suggestions. I'm happy to go through those with you or address any questions. I know Counselor Hilton also took a stab at this as well.
So I'm going to make a suggestion here, so we can get through this as expeditiously as possible. I know that John had some suggestions. I had some suggestions too, and as I started going through this, I actually went back to the council governance policy, the prior one, and then I'd made an editing mess, so I stopped and started over. And so my suggestion is this, what you have, and by the way, everybody was welcome to submit suggestions. I don't think anybody else did, but that doesn't mean that they... Did you send something to the clerk?
No, I don't think anything was put forward that the town council was going to, as a body, review the governance committee, and that people wanted suggestions from everybody. I definitely remember Edwards saying, Council, Councilman Edwards saying he wanted to, he was going to look at it, but I certainly would not say this rose to a level of the town council, like a workshop, or offering suggestions. And I know when we went through this back in April, and, and did in fact adopt town governance, there were many, many nights of discussions and workshops and talking about it, and everybody was given a chance to make suggestions. I don't believe either you or Denise made a suggestion, you had comments to make, but I, I guess, I feel, if we're in a posture now where we're going to, we're looking to review the recently adopted April 1 governance policy, I don't think we should be taking action tonight. If you're serious about doing this and want input from people, then I think we need time to do that, and set, and set a workshop time to look at it.
Well, Counselor Cook, we talked about this, that we were...
Driggs.
We, we did discuss this. We did talk about people submitting their suggestions. I know that the town clerk sent out the policy to everybody so that they would have a copy. I know that she sent at least one, if not two, emails about this. So this is on the agenda. The council...
What's on the agenda is Edwards' proposals, and frankly, yours are not on the agenda, and I don't quite understand yours, because they relate to a governance policy adopted in 2016.
You haven't given me an opportunity to, to explain my proposals. But the council has a right, every council has a right to discuss, each council has a right to discuss the governance policies that they're comfortable operating on. And so we have this on the agenda to discuss, and we can also take suggestions during the meeting too. So Denise?
Yeah, I just want to say, the reason why his name is there is because he's the person who put it on the agenda, but it wasn't just his proposals. He put it, any of the agenda requests, it's just the agenda, the person who's asking for it is Counselor Edwards, and the subject is discussion and possible action of proposed modifications of town council governance policy. So it's not just John's changes, it's everyone's changes. And it was discussed two meetings, that this was going to be on there, and I know for a fact Nancy sent emails out, because I received one.
Counselor Park?
Yeah, I have some similar concerns to what Nancy just expressed. First of all, I commend Counselor Edwards and Counselor Hilton for taking the initiative and putting these proposed changes forward. But I was a little surprised that they were going to be presented at this town council, because I also felt as though I was not asked to give input or given a timely opportunity to give input. These changes that you and, and Counselor Edwards have proposed, I expect are going to result in some discussion, and it could be a lengthy discussion, I suspect, and I'm not sure that it's a good use of the council's time to have these discussions in a public meeting. I think that a workshop approach, or a subcommittee approach... I think that a workshop approach or a subcommittee approach would be a much better opportunity for us to exchange ideas and have a, you know, a good discussion about what we wanna change, why you wanna change, what are the implications of the changes and frankly, if it's, if, if I missed the opportunity because I was asleep at the switch, whatever, then I think we should still back up a little bit here and take the opportunity to, you know, discuss these changes and to make sure everybody has input.
Is there any problem with continuing this and scheduling a workshop?
Input can be given tonight, correct?
Madam President?
Yes, John?
Just to address some of the comments, I'm happy if we push this off to a workshop. However, I would like to see action taken tonight on one specific item in our governance policy and that's specifically under section E, item number three, the suggestion to strike the words "only when no closed executive sessions are scheduled." I firmly believe that our constituents, the residents of this town, have a right to petition this body for anything and there should be zero restrictions placed upon that and I would be happy to move the rest of it, provided we make that amendment tonight.
So, the amendment would be a public forum at every meeting?
Absolutely.
I believe in that.
I would just like to put it in perspective that this was debated and discussed quite extensively at the time back in April and one of the, one of the concerns we had was that meetings were going on till 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night because, and, and you have to think about the context. For some reason, our particular town council was subject to a lot of forum requests of people coming up and it got quite heated and quite, quite lengthy and quite, it's just time consuming. So, on the other hand, I don't think I've ever seen a more generous town council in terms of allowing anybody to speak on any agenda item than, than President Coulter was. So, to say that the public and certainly people had a right to, and it also happened, so there was that balance where President Coulter allowed people to speak to agenda items and he did. He was very generous and gave them all the time they wanted, frankly, sometimes to the annoyance of the council, at least me, but-
If I may, Councillor Driggs-
But on the other hand, and I just wanna just finish one thing, part of the other discussion was, and it had to do with the executive session, and I think everybody who was on the council at that time was very aware of the fact that it was President Coulter's position that the council look at the use of executive session, that there was a lot that happened there that may not have, that may not have-
Why you're gonna shut her down? I don't know.
Yes, no, 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 it's just the balance.
You never shut you down, you go on and on and on, let her speak.
It's the balance and so-
This isn't what we're talking about, right? Let her speak. John, you wanna make a motion?
I, well, so I just wanna clarify one thing, Councillor Driggs. Former Councillor Coulter is no longer the president of this town council?
I understand that.
And I, and I understand that and this is a governance policy that affects this town council-
I understand that.
Which I firmly believe, as I have stated, that it is the right of the public to petition this body at every single open meeting that we have. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to strike that item from our governance policy.
And I'm not clear on where we are.
Second. And I am saying that if we're-
Section E, item number three.
John, I second that and did you wanna table the rest of it until?
I'll make a second motion to table the rest, or to, to continue the rest.
So, can we clarify the page, John, that you've got?
Yes, it's under council, the existing governance policy.
Page three.
Page three.
Of exhibit 10 dash D sub one.
Correct.
So, it would modify three, which now says, "Open forum sessions will normally be scheduled at regular meetings only when no executive sessions are scheduled," and it would strike the "only when no executive sessions are scheduled," so that an open forum will be on the agenda for every regular meeting?
Correct. That is my motion.
Okay.
So, we're having discussions still? It's been moved and seconded?
It's been moved and seconded.
And my only, I will repeat my discussion, if we are planning to continue to have a workshop so the town council can talk about this, I see absolutely no purpose or frankly, fairness in going ahead with making, making a change before we have had an ability for everybody to think about this and discuss it again. So, I would oppose it. Let's either have a workshop and come up with a plan or not.
Madam President, the, the only discussion point that I would add is that, you know, at Councillor Driggs' request, I am happy to have a workshop and push the rest of this off, just making the point that I believe strongly, very strongly, it is a right of the public to petition this body-
So, make your argument.
And I do not believe that we can go forward without making this amendment tonight.
My second and it's a second, there's a motion and a second. I would like to, I would like to point out one thing. There is an email from the town clerk dated October 22nd that reads, "Councillors, Councillor Edwards has placed the governance policy on the agenda for Monday's meeting. Council president has requested I send an email to all councillors in case anyone has any comments or proposed changes. Please do not respond all and send responses to town clerk." That was sent out on October 22nd. So, the fact that, that this was going to be discussed, was going to be on the agenda, that everybody had a right to participate, was in that email. If, if folks didn't understand that email, I'm sorry, but it's pretty clear that this council had the intent of taking this up and having this on the agenda. If, if Mr. Edwards is willing to have a workshop and, and since, since, then that's fine, but I do believe that he has every right and, and, you know, according to this email, we all should have been prepared to discuss any council governance changes that we were interested in tonight. So, there's a motion and a second? All in favor? Any opposed?
The only thing I would say, instead of having a workshop, make it a special meeting so we can vote at it if, if-
Yeah.
We wanna vote at it at that point. Because of workshop, we can't vote at it, I understand. So, if we make it a special meeting, we can vote.
So, Mr. Solicitor, to continue this, do we have to, because it's a new business, not a public, public hearing, we'd have to have a specific date to continue to, but this item, we do not?
This is your governance policy, you can do this as a, a new agenda item, a new agenda for a special meeting, independent of tonight's agenda item.
Perfect.
I would like to have this meeting as soon as possible. Recently, the town clerk attempted to put an agenda item on and was told that according to the town council governance policy, she couldn't do it, which is, is certainly problematic. And actually-
That's one of the items that I had struck out of there as well.
Under the interpretation of that governance policy, if it's to be interpreted that the clerk can't come to find out, no one can except for the town council or members of the public. So, in theory, Jan can't put anything on the agenda, neither can the solicitor, neither can any department head, if you accept that interpretation. So, I would really like to have this meeting, you know, John and I both took the time to go through this based on Nancy's email. I do think that everybody was fairly warned that this is, this, this is what we were going to be doing tonight, so I'm a little disappointed to have to be scheduling a, yet again, another meeting about this. But, Jeanie, do you have any ideas on some calendar dates that we can get this done?
We have a public hearing on December 3rd for trash.
Which is, which is a Tuesday?
Tuesday, it's a Tuesday. There was a reason why it couldn't be on a Monday, oh, 'cause it was John's daughter's birthday.
Correct. The second, it's a very important day. She's one years old.
Her first birthday, so we decided to celebrate her birthday.
I did ask at that time, what was available that week and that week looked pretty clear.
It wouldn't have to be at the high school, though. We could do it tonight.
It really could, I mean, we honestly could make some of these changes tonight.
I am not opposed to, I mean, I feel like everybody did have the opportunity and did get fair warning to at least make some tonight and then if people wanna come back to it in six weeks or a month because they think that there are other things, so we-
I'm very opposed and I'll tell, partly I'm very opposed because Patricia's comments are, I can't even understand what she's talking about. It's, it's not even relating to the current governance policy that's in place.
You have to see, it, the new governance policy supersedes what, what you have. Secondly, I don't know what the hurry is and thirdly, I believe if you're going to make a change, you say the reason for change and I don't see any of that that I could look at.
Well, you, you haven't really given anybody who's taken any time to make any of these changes the opportunity to explain what's here and why they-
I don't think this is the proper forum. I think we should, I agree with Mr. Clark, I think we should have a workshop specifically that we're all come prepared and people are prepared to talk why they wanna make a change and people are prepared to-
Okay, in that case, in that case, I'm going to, let's, let's hold the group. Who would like to go forward with this tonight versus who would like to have a workshop?
I'd like to go forward with it.
I'd like to go forward with it tonight.
I would as well.
I'd go forward with it only because we got this October 22nd and I reviewed it. I was thinking we were doing it tonight, but-
In that case, we're gonna go forward with this tonight, because there are, there is a majority that would like to go forward.
So, I don't know why you're ramming this through, Tricia. I just don't get it. I'm not opposed to some of the changes.
Donna, this is, Donna, this is, it's, that's something-
No, you just wanna ram it through, you don't care about what anybody else thinks and yes, it says October 22nd and we did look it over, but one of the questions was is I don't understand why some of the, why some of the changes are being made, which this is what we did with the charter review, we had reason for change and whatnot. I understand, no, you always try to shut me down, I'm gonna speak, because you always spoke, we never shut you down.
One of, one of the problems we-
I am stating that I think it's unreasonable.
We're gonna take another recess, if we're gonna all talk all over each other. The decision has been made, a majority has-
You made the decision. You don't listen to anybody.
The majority has. Now, this is, now, now this is getting, this is getting out of hand. The decision has been made.
You're making it out of hand. I think it's reasonable to have a workshop, but everyone wants to go forward, you don't even know for the reasons.
I'm gonna take, that we take a recess again and we'll start in five minutes.
Because you don't even let anybody have any say.
Are we ready? In an effort to get some work done, in an, in an effort to get some work done, we are going to abide by, in the strictest sense, Robert's rules of order. Our solicitor acts as our parliamentarian under those circumstances. So, he will assist us in stepping through this, following Robert's rules clearly as to who is speaking, when they're speaking, making points of order and any other matters that fall under Robert's rules. Geo, would you like to start first?
I think there's probably some, I mean, obviously, this is, this is a lot, right? I'm not going to recite it chapter and verse, but I think in terms of the efficiency of any meeting, there are some very simple points that are worth following and, and let me start by saying the formality and adherence to Robert's rules is generally viewed as something that's at the discretion of the chair, the president of the council. You know, Councillor Hilton has indicated that she would like to look at some more formality here in order to keep things moving efficiently and so I'm gonna try to facilitate that as best I can. I think the, the, the two or three points that I'll, I'll raise, one is that comments need to be relevant to the agenda. Two, actually, my, my favorite point, which I've raised in the past, the intentions of fellow councillors should never be raised when it comes to a discussion. It is the, the topic, the motion that is before you, that is the sole topic of debate and not what may motivate something like that. Number three, all comments need to be addressed through the chair and only should be made once the chair has recognized you. So, if the councillor has a desire to speak at any point, they should raise their hand or otherwise indicate to the chair that they are requesting to speak and should not speak until the chair acknowledges them by name. And that way, we can have a clear record and we can have an organized debate. Typically, and again, this is at the discretion of the chair, but typically, each councillor will have one opportunity to speak at each point in the process. Say your piece, say it thoroughly and then let the other councillors have their opportunity to do the same. This is not a debating club, this is a council and a deliberative body. You, each should have the opportunity to say, express your opinion on each matter, but it is not a back and forth amongst the council members. That is not the intent of, of, of a deliberative body of this sort. And so, again, I could, I could probably go on and I may interject with other points to keep things rolling, but I think if we can just focus on those basics for now, we can, we can see these items, you know, move forward, discussed, disposed of or deferred, depending on your will and, and go from there.
As I said, I know that Councillor Edwards submitted some suggestions. I started to do the same and found myself, instead of trying to edit the current policy, I actually went back to the older and in many cases, they're very, very similar. So, it was easier for me to actually make the changes or refer to things from the older policy that, that I preferred to the new one. And I think for the purposes of moving this along and, and it looks like a lot, but I, I don't actually think it is, I think what we should do is go through or, you know, quickly review each paragraph or each section, determine which things from, or which paragraphs from each section we're the most comfortable with and, and adopt those and go forward.
Ms. President, I just ask for my own clarification, is it your intent to move a number of items, sort of categories of changes or, or is it your intent to try to lay that out as a single motion?
No, I think we would do it in category, in categories, so people had the opportunity to weigh in on each particular thing.
And so, could I, could I ask that, that if that is the intent going forward, that, that you or, or the movement prepare a, propose a motion and then start conducting debate on that item, so that we have a motion in front of us and so it's clear to all the council what exactly you're suggesting or somebody's suggesting?
Okay.
Excuse me?
Yes, Mr. Clark?
I have a question about the process. So, if we move forward with this, what you're proposing, that means tonight, we're going to vote to accept these changes based on a red line that possibly is gonna have more comments and changes added to it as we go through the discussion?
That is possible, yes. If, so if, if the councillor, you know, wants to add something or subtract something, that is welcome in the discussion.
Okay, well, wouldn't we wanna have a finished copy in front of us before we approve it? A red line is not, I don't consider, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Let's, let's, let's see how substantial the changes are. They may not be terribly substantial at all. So, going forward, comparing the two, the overview is exactly the same, meetings of the town council is the same, other than Councillor Edwards has a recommendation to schedule down to one meeting per month. So, before, would you like to?
Madam President?
Yeah.
If I may, I'll just give some, a brief background. I fully expect that we are not going to adopt this change at this meeting, but I feel it's worthwhile for this body to at least entertain the possibility going forward and the reason being is this body, I believe, should move much more efficiently in the way that we conduct business and having a single monthly scheduled meeting in which to do that agenda, I think would help move that process along. That being said, I have seen over many council meetings where the debate has devolved to a point where the council business drags on and on and on and I would like to see the council do everything within its effort in order to move expeditiously through the agenda and to conduct the business of the town. I will share one anecdote. When I lived in Newport, as many people may know, I attended many Newport City Council meetings and I very vaguely recall the council president and mayor, Harry Winthrop, conducting a meeting in which they had the regular business of the council, they conducted the executive session, they actually did theirs before the meeting. They actually did theirs before the meeting. And then they had an open public hearing on both table games at the casino, and they had an open public hearing on the Breakers Welcome Center, both two very highly contentious issues. And that body was able to move through that agenda within a three-hour time period. There is no reason why we, as a council here in the town of Tiverton, should take that much time, as much time as we do, in order to get through our meetings.
I just ask for clarity, so we are, these should be presented in the form of a motion, but I guess in this case, you're saying that you do not intend to move this change.
I do not intend to move this. I merely wish to express why I put that on there.
In that case, I'm going to draw a line through that one. So regular meetings of the town council, 2A are the same. 2B are very similar. I, I would tend to personally flight the one from the new government, governance policy. That would be my preference, although I do have a question for the solicitor.
Sorry, where are we?
We're on 2B. In 2B, and I have no idea why this would have ever been here, there's this language that said, "If such a provisional vote is taken, the same motion shall be placed on the agenda at the next regular meeting for ratification." Is there any reason to have that? It's not in the policy?
That's in the old policy, but it's not in the policy now.
It's not in the new one, but was there any, is there any valid reason for that?
No, I honestly, I think it's just asking for trouble to have provisional votes. Both political and legal trouble, for, for finer point on it.
In that case, I have no other suggestions for 2B. Does anyone else have any comments on 2B?
I do, Madam President.
But...
May I speak? Under the new provisions that we pass, that the public can...
This is, yeah, this is not a public hearing at this point. You know, there is an opportunity in this meeting to speak on issues, but I don't, I think that, you know, that would be at the discretion of the chair, I guess, at some point to take any public comment, but I don't believe it's required.
Did we not just pass that, that the forum is always open to the public?
No, no, we, we passed a motion that there will be an open forum at the beginning of every regularly scheduled council meeting where members of the public may sign up to speak...
I see.
On a, on a topic in front of the council. That's what we just passed.
Thank you, Madam President. The only problem I have is I can't follow along. I haven't seen these.
They are, they are in the backup. They were available as part of the council backup.
And I can, you know, also sign into Robert's Rules, although I can't tell you chapter and verse, you know, there is a provision that says that given, you know, particularly complicated matters, it is helpful to have a written set of changes that is available for review. But I do think, given that you're doing this piece by piece, as long as you clearly state the motion and the change, that, that the council and the public should be able to follow along as, as you do this piece by piece.
So there are no other recommended changes for 2B. 2C are identical in both versions. Does anyone have any comments on 2C? 2D are identical in both versions. Does anyone have any comments on 2D? That is also the case in that they're identical in 2E. Are there any comments on 2E?
Madam President, Madam President, would it be good to say if there are no, the ones that there are no changes, would we have any problems with accepting those? Would that be okay to do? You got to do each one of them.
I mean, I wouldn't necessarily have a vote on anything that's already in the policy. That would just slow, slow it down, I think.
There's no change. I'm just, in case, just...
Just read along and say the ones that there's no changes.
Just in case somebody, as Counselor Clark asked, can everybody amend anything else? There are no differences in 2E? Anyone on 2E?
Both of them.
Okay. Under conduct of meetings, those are the same. Does anyone have anything on 3A? Meeting governance is the same in both. That's 3B. Anyone on 3B? And that's the same with 3C. Voting is the same on both. That comes to speaking by members of the council, which is 3D. The first paragraph is the same. The second paragraphs are slightly different, and there are a couple of things that I prefer about the older version as compared to the new version, one of which is that in the older version, there is a notation about, "Members of the public shall be entitled to speak at regular meetings during any period designated on the agenda for public comments once for a period of three minutes or longer at the discretion of the president." The later policy specifies public hearings, open forum, otherwise at meetings, whereas this says, "Any period designated on the agenda for public comment." And to me, that seems simpler and a little bit clearer. I also like the three minutes, not that we necessarily enforce it, but especially if we have a big public hearing, something at the high school where, you know, 70 people want to speak, where we normally will give people a time limit. If it's in the policy, it doesn't seem arbitrary, so it's not as though for that hearing, we're making up a number. We're just saying. And every once in a while, it's a little useful if somebody comes in front of us and they get a little long-winded, that, you know, we can gently point out, you know, normally you can speak for three minutes, and after seven or eight, maybe you can slightly ask them to wrap it up, but there's something that you have to point to. So, you know, those things are, even though the newer policy breaks it up, it's basically all the same. It's all the same, other than the, the three minutes in that it just makes it clear that it's anything, anything on the agenda that's designated for public comment, and then other things if, if the president or the council so desires.
Madam President, before, before we move on to comments, is there a motion?
So, well, I'll make a motion on this one. So I would move that, that we replace E1 and E2 from the newer policy with 511. From the older policy.
So just to clarify the motion on, on the submission by Counselor Edwards, we have something designated E sub 1 and E sub 2. Those two paragraphs will be stricken from the current policy and replaced by the item in, in the backup that you provided, President Hilton designated as 511.
Yep.
But we would keep, I assume, the reference, make that E1 in the new policy.
Second.
Counselor Devers?
I just have a, maybe I'm not understanding this, but the newer policy dated April 1st, 2019, says two minutes. Do you want to increase it to three minutes?
I think...
"Members of the public shall be entitled to speak once for a period of two minutes."
The paragraph the old policy calls for three minutes.
Three minutes.
So that would be the new time limit, along with other changes.
So you want to increase the amount of minutes?
To increase it to three minutes.
All right. Okay, because I didn't think that was clear that you understood. So you want to increase the amount of time?
To three minutes.
Okay. I'm asking that only because you made it sound like there wasn't an entice in the new policy, and there is.
We're reverting to the old policy, which was three minutes.
Right, okay.
So are we going to go around the room talking, or how are we doing this?
I think if anyone wants to have a comment at this point, then, then this is your opportunity to comment on this motion.
Mrs. Drake?
I have a comment. So as I understand it, basically, what E51 does is it changes it to three minutes, but it also would eliminate, "The president will generally strive to invite public comment on all open session policy and operational agenda items," and that will disappear. And that's something that I felt very strongly when we did this policy, opened it up, it gave the public the right to talk on agenda items, which was not my, my history with the town council in the past. And I think it would be very bad to get rid of that line.
Yes, John?
One comment. I don't believe that hopes or aspirations have any place in the policy.
What? I didn't hear what he said.
I'm not sure I understood the relevance of that.
I don't understand the relevance of that.
Anybody else who hasn't, would like to make a comment? Denise, you wanted it, if everybody has spoken once, then Denise, you asked...
Yeah, I'm just reading what, what Nancy is saying, but 51, is that all right if I speak again? She'll...
Just to go back to my original comment, the, the process is that everyone should have a comment. This should not necessarily be a debate amongst the members. And if there is something new to offer, I, you know, obviously, the president has the discretion, but I would just watch out, you know, be cautious, I guess, of opening up.
I, I'm, I think it's fair that if everybody's had an opportunity to speak once and then everybody has an opportunity to take a second time to clarify something or ask something, I'm okay with that. Is that okay to you?
I just want to make sure everyone understands the, the policy that you're, you're using and is consistent, that's all.
I didn't even hear what else he said. I didn't hear what he said. Counselor Cook didn't hear your, couldn't hear your comment. Mr. Edwards, could you repeat that so Counselor Cook could hear it?
I said that I don't believe that hopes or aspirations have any place in our policy.
Hopes and aspirations?
Nancy, E1 and...
Yes.
Never mind, I'm not going to say anything.
If you, if you address it to the chair, the chair can then convey the question to another counselor.
Yeah, no, I'm done.
I, if anybody's second, because I have one other second thing about that in particular. I think that, while I might not phrase it the same way as Mr. Edwards, I, I do think that the language that says, "Members of the public shall be entitled to speak at regular meetings during any period designated on the agenda for public comment once," and "At other times, one invited to do so by the president." I do feel that it is a little risky to use words like "strive" because there are some discussion items that may not be public hearing items, and it becomes something of a debate as to whether or not the public should speak on a particular item. So I'm not really comfortable with that because it's, it's not a, it's, it's not... This is supposed to be a policy document, not an aspirational document, and I am more comfortable with things in policy that are a little more black and white and a little clearer, especially honestly, being the person who has to sit in this chair right now. So I'm less comfortable with that.
I think if I might respond, at the time that this was, was...
Yes?
No, no, I just was making sure that...
It's, it limits, it generally strive to invite public comment on all open session policy and operational agenda items. And it's obviously subject to time, time and legal, time and legal restraints. So that, that's the striving part.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, Madam President. I'm, I'm not sure if I understand what she's questioning. Is it, I, the way I read it is the president can ask the public if they'd like to speak on a particular item. That's all they're doing. You're not giving them permission to, you're asking if anybody would like to come up and speak on an agenda item.
Correct.
That's what you're doing. That's what we do now, when we, when we have something that we discuss and any comment, anybody from the public would like to speak, that's what you're doing, basically, correct?
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to clarify that because that's where I was a little confused.
So there's a motion in a second. There's a motion in a second then that would replace...
Madam President, may I speak?
Again, it's your discretion, Madam Chair. If you denied for one member of the public, I think it's very difficult to...
I would agree.
You're about to make the rights of the public to speak in public meetings a lot more strenuous. You're sending some, arguably shutting it down, and you're not going to let the public speak on that item.
We've already, we've already discussed that this is not, this is not listed as a, a public item on the agenda for...
But the policy states you'll strive to allow the public to speak.
Why is he letting him speak? Mr. Chichiongi, might you help me out there?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think there's a, a question. I think you already indicated that, that there's not going to be a public comment period in this...
So we're going back to the old way that the public can't speak on agenda items then?
No.
Yeah, but we'll make sure it's recorded that way too, just to just...
Please address the chair.
Denise, please. So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? In your post?
Abstention?
Section 2, section 2 is basically already in section 511.
You're talking about section 2 from the old policy?
Yeah, no, E2, E2 is incorporated, the same language is incorporated in 511.
You've just moved that, you've just moved that, you just adopted that.
So that all stays the same. The open forum, the open forum sessions, which we did vote on removing that only when no closed executive sessions are scheduled, so there'll be an open forum at every regularly scheduled meeting.
Madam President?
Yes, John?
Under section E3, I'd like to make a motion to strike the words "not for comments on criticisms of or accusations against citizens or personnel other than sitting elected officials." I believe this has no place in our policy.
Would you like to make a motion?
Did I not just make a motion?
No, thank you.
Oh, sorry.
In that case, is there a second?
Second.
Don, do you want to add any comments to that, or...
Madam President, other than I don't believe we should be regulating speech from the public, I just don't believe that this has any place in our policy.
Anyone else?
Yeah, to, to speak? Yes. I think, I guess I, a question I always ask when you want to make a change is, what's the problem? What's the problem you're trying to solve here in your, in your motion?
Again, I would ask that we address all questions through the chair.
Could you ask Mr. Edwards what the problem is that he's trying to solve in his motion?
I think...
I don't understand.
I, I think Mr. Edwards did explain it, but would you like to rephrase?
Madam President, I believe that the words "open forum sessions are intended for policy and operational issues or other items of governmental or broad community interest" should suffice. I do not believe we need the addition of qualifications on comments from the public.
Madam President, I, I would just like to add, there are other places in the document that talk about subject to decorum, and I think this goes to decorum because there have been in the past some pretty violent comments and statements made from the public, and that has no place in the town council.
I would like to speak.
Yes, Donna.
From the past and from the present, there was a real, a definite reason for this, unfortunately, because of uncivil behavior. One of the first times that it occurred in the past was the attack on Susan Gill by... One of the first times that it occurred in the past was the attack on Susan Gill by members of the town council. It was quite awful, and they know who they are. The second one was to Brett Pelletier. We also had problems with very unkind, uncivil behavior and statements and character assassination, which has no place, and this is why this was put in, to protect the public or volunteers or personnel because there was uncivil behavior towards these people. So if you remove this for some reason, are you then for doing that type of attack? That's all I can see right now, is that to remove it for attack. The only reason it was put in was because we have had problems with people being attacked, just sitting there applying for, to be a volunteer for whatever board. We've had councillors go after them to the extent that it was so awful, it was embarrassing. It happened not once, but twice. And then when I sat on the town council, it started to happen on a regular basis. It was unbelievably awful. So this is why this was put in. If you want to remove it, you do have a majority, you can do as you please. I just feel that it has a real purpose here to protect the public from being attacked, just simply trying to volunteer because you do not agree with them. You go after them. So do what you please.
I'm comfortable with having that removed because there is already language here that does that. The existing language under number 3 says, "The president shall enforce order and decorum among members of the public in attendance at meetings. Any person when entitled or permitted to address the town council shall, while speaking, be subject to the same rules and shall be entitled to the same privileges of order applicable to members of the town council." So I do believe that the language is already here that not only allows, but requires the president or whoever is chairing the meeting to ensure that speakers conduct themselves according to the same rules that the council does, meaning that you, you know, can't attack someone's character and you can't question their motive. I think that that language is, I think that that language is already here in, in clear format. So I'd prefer to stick with the, the language that actually references the same rules and the, and the same privileges. Madam President?
Would you...
Madam President? Yes, Denise. Wouldn't that have to be a motion to add the old language in then? Because once you take...
Number 5.
It's actually already in number 5. Okay.
Madam President, would you have any objection to adding, "The president shall enforce order and decorum among members of the public in attendance at meetings," including not somehow getting that language back in, prohibiting comments on criticism or accusations against citizens or personnel?
So just for process here, I think what Counselor Driggs is suggesting is a request for a friendly amendment to the motion that's on the floor to move that stricken language down to the end of the first sentence of number 5. That's at the discretion of the movement as to whether to accept that as an amendment to his motion.
I decline. When we reach number 5, we can certainly have a motion to get, to put that language down there.
That is also a possible...
So on, so on, so on the amendment for 3, there's a motion in a second?
Yes.
In that case, there's a motion in a second. All in favor? Opposed? On number, on number 4, Mr. Edwards has recommended striking, "Speakers shall not be required to provide their address..."
Madam President?
Yes, John?
I'd like to make a motion to amend section, or item number E-4, to strike the language, "Speakers shall not be required to provide their address, but the president may provide residents of Tiverton with priority in order of speaking," and insert the name, or insert the words, "Speakers shall state their address immediately following where it says the, where it says, and state his or her full name and connection, if any, to Tiverton, as well as their address."
Counselor Edwards...
I'm going to have to clean that up, aren't I?
No, no, you're not. I just, there's one word out of, out of order there. So I'm following the, the red line of your, your backup materials. I believe that's what you're suggesting.
Correct.
You said, "Speakers shall state their address."
Correct.
Should or shall?
My motion is for shall.
Shall.
Mr. Clark?
Yeah, Madam...
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Clark?
Yeah, Madam President, I would like to know why this is being proposed.
Mr. Edwards, could you respond to Mr. Clark, please?
Yes. Past practice has always been that speakers, when they approach the podium, would state their name and address. I feel like it's relevant to knowing that somebody is an elector.
Mr. Perry.
Yeah, Madam President, I didn't have a problem with them stating their name and they were a resident of Tiverton. I didn't feel it necessary they have to say where they live. Because, you know, that, you know, sometimes, you know, that may affect them in the public. So I just, I think stating they're from Tiverton and their name would be good enough, I think.
So are you asking for a friendly amendment? Anybody else?
I would, I, I would agree. I could go along with, if, if the movement's willing, with that they should state their, that they're a resident. I don't think they should state their address.
I agree that maybe that should be, state the town they're, they're from.
Yeah, from Tiverton and, you know, resident and their name is fine, I think. I don't think they should have to give their address.
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
I'd like to amend my motion to say, instead of "Speakers shall state their address," "Speakers shall state their town of residence."
And does the secondor agree with that friendly amendment?
Yes.
"Speakers shall state their town of residence."
City or town.
City or town.
So you would still strike, "Speakers shall not be required to provide their address, but the president may provide residents of..." Speakers should, speakers should state their town of residence?
Shall.
Or shall?
City or town of residence.
Madam President, may I also ask the movement if he would be, I like the second part of what was there, that the president may provide residents of Tiverton with priority in order of speaking.
I would accept that amendment.
You would. So speakers shall state their town of residence and the president may provide residents of Tiverton with priority in order of speaking.
Secondor supports the friendly amendment.
Yes, another friendly amendment.
Still have a motion and a second.
There's a motion and a second. I would like to comment on that, though.
Madam President, can I just ask, just one more procedural step?
Yes, please.
If, if you're prepared to comment, it's not untypical that you would make sure that the council members have completed their comments, and then you make the last comment, you have that privilege?
Fair enough.
And that might prevent future ongoing back and forths.
Does anyone else have a comment? In that case, my only comment about the priority for residents of Tiverton is that I, I think there are people who have reasonable and fair business here, you know, business owners, property owners, and, you know, are you a full-time resident of Tiverton? I'm just, I think if somebody states their residence and their, it still says in here their connection to Tiverton. So their connection may be that I own a property here or I own something. I feel a little uncomfortable about trying to say, and, and I don't ever remember honestly a hearing, a public hearing, where the council didn't let every single person, if it was a public hearing and it was open for public speaking, even if the council had to sit there for four hours, that everybody got a chance to speak at least once. So I feel a little uncomfortable about that prioritizing that if you...
My, my only comment is that, Madam President, I would just be clear that it says it's at, at your discretion.
Right.
So that your comfort level could be adjusted, you know, as, as you wish.
So there's a motion in a second? All in favor or no? I'm sorry, did you have, Steve had a question.
Yeah, what is the wording of this now? I'm trying to keep track of it.
If I may, Madam President, I believe that the, the, section 4 would start with members as it does now and, and the first sentence would end, if any, to Tiverton on the third line. The following line would read, "Speakers shall state their city or town of residence," period, "the president may provide residents of Tiverton with priority in order of speaking," period.
Okay. In that case, there's a motion in a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Time of adjournment...
Excuse me?
Second. Oh, I thought you were saying the...
Madam President, I, I have a, would like to move something on number 5 under E-5.
Oh, 5. Okay.
And I would like to add a comp, after the first paragraph, first sentence, "attendance at meetings," comma, "including limiting comments on, or criticisms of, or accusations against citizens or personnel other than sitting elected officials," which just further defines the kind of order and decorum what's included in that.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Can that be repeated again, please?
I believe the motion was that on section 5 of subsection E, subsection 5 of section E, there will be a new second, sorry, the first sentence will be modified to read, "The president shall enforce order and decorum among members of the public in attendance at meetings," comma, "including limiting comments on criticisms of, or accusations against citizens or personnel," open parentheses, "other than sitting elected officials," close parentheses, period.
So including, limiting?
Just putting...
Limiting comments.
Okay.
So, yeah.
But inviting comments. You can only do it for three minutes, anyway.
Madam President?
Yes, John?
I'd just like to comment that I believe the words, "The president shall enforce order and decorum," is self-explanatory.
Well, if we put including, limiting, people are still allowed to talk, but it would be the president's, I think I understand this, that it would be the, the president's discretion on whether it's getting out of hand, which is what it is now, I would imagine, but, but it just spells it out. I don't have a problem with the concept, but I don't, I would be more comfortable if it, if it referred actually back to Robert's Rules or said something consistent with, consistent with, with Robert's Rules of, in other words, there's something that you could point to as part of Robert's Rules in terms of somebody's attacking somebody's character or their motive, or as opposed to this language.
So interestingly, Robert's Rules limits the body more than it does the public. So there's no prohibition on the public attacking the intentions of the council members. It's only on the council members attacking each other's intentions. So I'm not sure, at least off the top of my head, I certainly can't give you a citation to look to that would do what I think this would do, which is, goes a bit further than Robert's Rules. This, the motion on the floor goes a bit further, I believe, than Robert's Rules would in limiting, giving the chair, the potential, the president the potential to restrain public comment.
Madam President?
Yes, John?
I have one final question. Perhaps you can relay, relay this to Counselor Driggs. Is the intent of the amendment to limit the ability of the council to do those things to the public, or is it to limit the ability of the council to say those things to each other?
It is, it's a, it's attached to, "The president shall enforce order and decorum among members of the public in attendance at meetings."
Mr. Chichioni or Yon? Does anybody have a suggestion for some wording here that would remind people that they need to be respectful, that they need to be respectful when they're speaking, that, you know, they, they, that they, you know, they shouldn't attack their fellow citizens or a potential, you know, board... Do you have any suggestions for some language here?
I, I don't, and I personally don't feel that you need the elaboration, frankly. I think that order and decorum speaks for itself, or it should, and I think that there is sufficient room there for anyone who chairs a meeting to apply that properly. I think this is a waste of time.
Sorry.
Fair enough.
She asked for your comment.
Has anybody not commented once on this yet? In that case, John?
I was just going to call the question. But if we're, if we're at that point...
Okay. Could someone restate the, the motion as, as it was?
"The president shall enforce order and decorum among members of the public in attendance at meetings," comma, "including limiting comments on criticisms of or accusations against citizens or personnel other than sitting elected officials."
Is there a second?
Sorry, a second?
In that case, there's a motion and a second. All in favor? So then 5 stays as it is. The time of adjournment...
Second.
Yeah, very funny. The time of adjournment, three hours versus three and a half hours? I don't know if it really matters.
We never do it anyway.
I'm actually, I'm just going to withdraw that, and, and we'll just stay with the three hours. On the, on the minutes, these are almost identical, other than the mention about meeting being videotaped, but I don't think that's terribly important unless anybody has a comment on that one. The meeting agenda, which is number, which is number 4. I don't know why my... I don't know why my change didn't show up in italics, but it did. I changed that, it says right now, "Any member of the town council or of the public may request a new business item." And that's how we ended up with a situation where interpretation was that Nancy Mala could place an agenda, an item on the agenda. And so, it says right now, "Any member of the town council or of the public," and that's what we seem to be adhering to, or that's what the interpretation is, then that means solicitor can't, town administrator can't. So I'm suggesting we just change that to "any person," because I believe that anybody has the right to ask a new agenda item.
May I speak to this briefly, Madam President? I think that the, the benefit of the language that you have now is that it is very clear that it maintains control within the council of their own agenda. What, what I would be concerned about was that you, you give the public the impression that they have the right to be on any agenda, when in fact, the next paragraph makes very clear that it's up to the president and the vice president of the council to set the agenda based on prioritization and competing time interests and things like that. And quite often in my, in my year here, I've seen items that were not put on the agenda because it was felt that there was not enough time to get through items. And so, I think that there may be a downside to, to changing that language. As a practical matter, to address your concern about the clerk not being able, or the administrator not being able to put something on, I, I think as a, as a matter of practice, when we've seen these agendas over the years, that there are often items that say town clerk or town administrator, but my impression was always that that was done essentially at the council president's discretion. And so, while it may say administrator, it's really the president who chooses to put that on there in that agenda meeting. So, the same thing with the clerk. If the clerk asks for something to be there, really, you're the filter, or the vice president's the filter in the, in the agenda meeting. I would just caution that you might either lose some control over your own agenda or, or be forced to say no to people who have an expectation that may be higher than it is today.
Madam President?
We're all waiting to jump on him.
So, so I sat in the agenda meeting as the council president when Madam Clerk put this agenda item on the agenda. And, and then, when it was, when it was on the published agenda, two council members insisted that we couldn't properly take up that agenda item because it was listed under the town clerk and she didn't have a right to put things on the agenda. And the...
With solicitor backup?
And the solicitor backed it. So...
Help us out here.
Maybe, I probably should have finished my, my thought a little more clearly. What I'm suggesting is that the agenda say, "President Hilton," on any item that comes out of clerk, administrator, department head, or, or, you know, that's, it's...
Madam...
I'm not wedded to this, I'm simply raising a practical point, I guess, in terms of public perception.
Okay. Mr. Perry?
But my question, Gio, is, at that time, there was no sitting president. So she had to hold, put it on the agenda and then hold the meeting to elect a president. So why wouldn't she have the authority to put it on the agenda?
I'd like to say something, too.
I think there was a sitting...
No, there was none.
No, there wasn't.
There was none. There was none.
But, she called me as senior member of the five that were here, and she said, "I need to add this on. Is that okay? Should I do it?" And I said yes, because she didn't have a president. She asked me, because she didn't know what to do, and as senior member of the five, it says other places that the senior member, if someone's not, she asked me, and that's how it was put on. Maybe I should have put it on under my name, but, but that's not the way we, we have done things past practice.
No, no, I understand. And again, I'm not, I'm not trying to take a position on this one way or the other. I just wanted to, you know, make the point that count, you know, bodies need to control their agendas and, and it can get very difficult when you have to say no to the public if they think they have that right. I, I think that's a great point, though, and I would perhaps think about amending this next paragraph to say, "The president, the vice president," or in absence of both, "the senior member."
It says that the amount who conducts the meeting would be a senior member if both were absent.
But I don't think it says it in conjunction with the agenda, which would probably be a great fix for future discussion.
Now, let's go back to our order here. Who else would like to speak on this?
No.
Well, I, I would, I'm sorry. I, I guess I, I would listen to Gio's concern that potentially, to put the language you're thinking about, makes it sound like anyone has the right to be on, and that's just not true.
Madam President?
Yes, Denise?
When you write, "Any person may request," that doesn't mean the request will be granted. So, it doesn't say any, any person may be on the agenda, it just says a request for the agenda. So during the agenda meetings, if the president decides, "No, I don't think it should be here, maybe two meetings from now, or maybe we could do it without it." So it doesn't say, well, this doesn't mean, this is not written in stone, they will be on the agenda. It says it's just a request.
Absolutely true. Yeah, my concern wasn't what it meant, it was just the way it might be viewed.
I would also point out to the solicitor that the agenda request form is on the website, and it just says, "Town council agenda request." If you'd like to put, I mean, we invite people to do that now. We post it and say that if you want to be on the town council agenda, fill out this form and give it to the clerk. So, so I'm, I am comfortable with "may" because I don't ever want to be in the position that we were the last time where somebody indicated that, that only a town council, only the town council or member of the public could, because this says, the other one says, "Any member of the public can." The old one says, the public, anyone, the old one says, "Any member of the town council or any member of the public." And that's how Nancy's request ended up getting denied because she's not a member of the town council or a member of the public. So, that's why I'm comfortable with the language, "Anyone may." And other than that, the rest of the, the rest of it is basically identical up until John's proposed amendment.
Madam President, if I may, I just put that in there because I think we should save trees where we can. But do we have an amendment or a motion on the floor?
Did you make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I just want to make one comment before we do that. Are we back on the agenda thing? Anyone? Is that the motion that's about to be made?
Any person can.
Okay. I just want to remind everybody that the context of my objection was both that she didn't fall within the town council or the public, but also that there was at that time no town council president or designee to prepare the agenda. It was a very strange time. So, for those reasons, it wasn't just that.
Do we, do we have a, is there a motion?
So, I have, I have a motion to change the first paragraph of this, to say that any person may request a new business item.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any other comments?
Keyword is "request."
Request. Motion, a second. All in favor? I think the rest of it is basically the same. John, your soft copy thing, did you?
Don't worry about it.
Okay, we're not gonna worry about that.
Madam President, did you want to take the opportunity to add in the most senior member to the first sentence in the next paragraph?
I don't know if we'll ever run into that again, but...
Never know.
We might. I think, I think the only other part of this, and I did talk with the town, I did speak with the town clerk on this, is at the end of, at the end of this, as far as the availability. I think that that's all the, I think that that's all the same. Items added during the meeting are the same. Does anybody have anything on that one?
Nope.
So, the only thing that we're, we're, the only thing we're changing is, that one is to, any person, is to change that to "any person." The rest of it, the rest of the whole thing is...
Well, we're striking, glad I just...
I'm, I'm John. We're making the changes to that one. I think most of the rest of this all stays the same, except for C, which is, John suggested, change in the consent agenda, which changes it from considered after the consent agenda, not at the very end of the meeting.
Madam President? I'd like to make a motion to strike the words "all other agenda items" and replace that with "the consent agenda." I firmly believe that if we have an item on the consent agenda, such as a notification from somebody or from one of our bodies, or somebody from the planning board, for instance, we pull the meeting minutes off and we are looking for input from a member of that board who has volunteered additional time to come to our meetings, they should be considered first.
Second.
Discussion? No discussion?
I just remind, the reason that was changed, we, we found that the meetings were, the agenda was very full, and sometimes you would end up spending an hour on the consent agenda for whatever reason, and it just seemed like we didn't get to the other business. So that's why we did that.
May I say something?
Yes, Denise.
I always felt bad for the poor department head when we pulled one of their consent agendas, and they had to stay here until 11 o'clock at night until we get back to it. So I just thought it would be best that, I think it's best that we deal with it as it comes up.
Anyone else have a comment? There's a motion and a second, all in favor? The recusal items are the same unless anybody has anything on that. And so, the clerk of the council is the same, other than John's preference should be given to employees of the town clerk's office?
Madam President, I'm gonna skip over this, but, because I think we should think about this a little bit further, but it left it open to us appointing some random person if, at least in my interpretation, the town clerk or clerk of the council was not available. Just want to prevent us enlisting somebody like Marcia, for instance.
Well, do you feel strongly about enough about this?
No.
No? Okay. In that case, we'll leave it the way it is, unless anybody else wants to change it. Other support? Don't see anything this. I did add one thing, though, here, under actions by the president. And I would like to add a sentence at the end that says, "Actions by the president under this policy shall not be in conflict with the town charter." And I wanted to point that out specifically, because it's occurred to me and has slightly come to my attention that there may have been decisions that have been made by the president that I think rightfully should have been made by the town council. And that includes recently expenditure of funds and other decisions that I believe that the council should have made. So, the charter is very, very clear about the council's role, and it's very clear about the authority for expenditures and all those other kinds of things. So I would like to include this line, even though it's in the charter, as a reminder for whoever is the president or the vice president, that there's nothing in the council government's policy that, that allows the president to have any more authority other than what is granted in the charter, which is actually...
Can I, can I, can I make, I think you're referring to the conversation we had in the past, whether we could use money from the general fund and...
Absolutely, Mrs. Strick, I'm not referring to that.
Okay, fine. But my, would just, would like to point out that this, this is already controlled, the language, I don't think you have to add that statement. "This policy is not meant to and shall be interpreted not to conflict with the town charter." The open meetings, all the Rhode Island, it's, everybody is subject to the town charter. I think it's...
Anyone else? I made a motion. Did I make a motion? Did you get a second?
Well, then you better officially make a motion.
All right, well, then I'll make a motion and we add the line, "Actions by the president under this policy shall not be in conflict with the town charter." Second. Motion, a second. Anybody else with a comment?
Yeah, it's not, it's not needed, it's under coordination.
Very clear. Would you have any? Donna, I think...
Wouldn't hurt to put it there.
We've got a motion, a second. All in favor? Anyone opposed?
That's it, I think.
And I think, unless anybody else...
Yeah, I have no, I'm fine, I'm fine with not addressing that.
Does anyone else have anything that they would like to add or change?
Madam President?
Yes, John?
Just a couple of items. Again, I didn't have official language for our policy, but I thought that this body should consider them at some point. The items that I put in here, the two ones that I believe are pressing, that are not contemplated by this policy, are number one, policy for the council to utilize official government emails, town council emails, when conducting town council business, just to prevent any issues with utilizing personal emails. I know on occasion, I have been, I've received emails to my personal address from constituents, which I then always forward on to my council email, so there is a record. Want to make sure that we're all following that policy. I'm not sure what that language might look like. And then number two, again, I've seen this happen in Newport, that I believe that we should have some form of a policy to enforce members paying attention to the discussion and not looking down at cell phones or utilizing cell phones to communicate with other members who, other members of the public who may not be afforded the opportunity based on discussion to be involved in the discussion. And I just think it's disrespectful to the rest of the council if we are not paying attention to one another, and it's disrespectful to the community if we're not engaged in the discussion. Again, I don't have any suggestions for language, but I think these are two things that we should contemplate at some point in the future, if not tonight.
Does anyone else have any comments on those ideas? I would be curious for an opinion from the town solicitor as to a policy on using town mail, which there may be some benefit to. Not necessarily an answer tonight. And I would also be curious about a policy, if not, I mean, a lot of us use our phones and our iPads for documents, you know, we don't bring our charters or things with us because we have them on our phones. But I am a little curious about what the implications are of text conversations or emails that are going back and forth between, potentially between counselors during the council. between counselors during the council, during what is a hearing, open council meeting, whether or not that disadvantages constituents who don't have the opportunity to participate, and whether or not you should consider some sort of policies on those things.
I, I can, I can speak to two of those points, because I, I think these came up at other times during the last year, um, in, in terms of public records requests in particular. The, I, I think Council Redwards has a good habit, which is to forward emails from a personal or, or other work, uh, email that are constituent-related or, or town-related to his town email to create a record, so that if there is a public records request, um, there is one place to look for all of that. And that way, you're not obliged, as a sitting council member, to have to then sort through your personal emails to determine if anything was responsive to a public records request. If you are in the habit of sending every single piece of correspondence, it doesn't mean it's public record necessarily, because in particular, constituent correspondence is, is not a public record in many cases. But at least you only have one place to have to look. What it also does is it allows the town, through its IT system and backups, to maintain those public records even once you're off the council, and that came up in a recent request. If a council member or a, or a board or commission member no longer serves, the town really can't compel them to go back and respond to a public records request, they're no longer subject. Um, but in the interest of transparency, that might be something that's interested, interesting to a member of the public that's requesting them. So, um, I think that's a good habit. Uh, I'm not sure how you would enforce it. I think it's, it's honestly in the interest of any board or commission member or council member to do that, just because it makes responding to public records requests a lot easier for you. So it's sort of self-enforcing in that sense. I think the next, uh, component, you know, is, is even more difficult, uh, to enforce. Um, you know, you, you can't compel speech, uh, you can, you know, enforce decorum. And if somebody is, has the bad habit of, you know, texting while they're sitting in a meeting, um, that's certainly problematic, but I'm not sure how you would, uh, enforce that. I think the language becomes incredibly difficult. You know, does it give somebody, uh, uh, you know, some constituent a, a right that the person sitting next to him who's not texting the council member might not have? Maybe. Um, that, that, that constituent and that counselor also have, to some extent, a right to, to privacy, just because you have a, an exception for constituent communications, um, not being public records. So I, I, I think you'd have to dance around that somehow. Um, I think that would be, um, you know, difficult to, to put pen to paper and draft. I'm not saying it's impossible, but I, I think that would take a lot more consideration, um, to, to make sure you're not, you're not, you're, you're balancing all of the respective interests.
Madam President?
Yes?
So if someone in the audience is texting to one of us to tell us what to say, and we are reading a verbatim from our phone, does that become public record?
Well, if you just read it verbatim, then it is public record.
Okay, that's, that's my question.
Now, I don't think that the message necessarily is, right? I mean, that's different.
No, but if somebody is saying, why don't, like, this is what you need to say, and I read it verbatim from my phone, that is now public record because I'm reading something from my phone.
Well, because you read it into the record.
Right, thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, John?
One more question for the solicitor on that. I think we all recall the, the incident in question where there was a list held up in a, a council meeting that was deemed to be part of the public record. So hypothetically speaking, if I pick up my phone and I'm reading directly off of a text message, does that, does the sender of the text message now also need to be entered into the record?
If, you know, if, I don't, I don't think it's as clear as that. I, I think that if, if you're reading off of a, any document on your phone, whatever it is, right, that's still your phone, and how that got to you matters, right? But, you know, you're, you're allowed to get information from wherever you can get information, right? It's not, you're not limited in that way. In that case, uh, if I recall correctly, and I think maybe some people here would know a lot better than I would, but if I recall correctly, what happened was the, the, the correspondence was compelled, but then found to not really being a list in, in the sense that would be discoverable or, or producible. And so therefore, it was just sort of a, uh, you know, it died on the vine, that, you know, there was never, no, no document was ever produced.
He was fine. He was fine.
But, but no document was ever produced. In the end, he said, well, I didn't need a list, I, I really just, you know, was, was paraphrasing.
Again, not to rehash the past, I just, as an example.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand. But I, but my, my, my point is just the legal one, it's not the history, cause I don't think I'm on the history. And I don't know it, to be honest with you, but I can tell you that the legal point is that, is that, um, again, it's an enforcement problem, it becomes very, very difficult. And, and, uh, you know, I think, I think the council could get really bogged down in, in minutia of things like that. I think if somebody reads something into the record, then it's in the record. How they got that, whether it was something they drafted themselves, or they made notes for themselves to read, because it's easier to do it that way, you know, if you prepare a speech, if you prepare some comments, I, I, you know, whether that, that happened on the fly during the meeting, or whether they did that 10 hours before for their own benefit, I, I'm not sure what the council gets out of that, you know, in terms of practically moving the agenda forward.
Madam President? If I just may add, the, the genesis of my thinking on this as well, uh, again, dates back to my, uh, time attending meetings in Newport, uh, where there was an issue where council members were being, or city council members were being, uh, messaged, uh, by members of the public, and I believe at the time, I have to go back and look, but I believe at the time, it wa, it actually fell on the, on the, the mayor to state that anybody who receives a text message would be forced to read it out loud on the docket. I don't know if that's something that, again, is enforceable, but, um, it was their practice, and it, and it stopped the, the incessant under the table.
And look, even if it's not legally enforceable, shame is a powerful, you know, motivator, so I, I, I understand. You know, my, my, my fifth grade English teacher mother understood that, you know, implicitly.
In that case, does anybody else have anything? Policy before we move on? Mr. Clark?
Well, um, I think in addition to adding something about email policy and cellphone use, another area that we might wanna visit is defining the process by which we would revise this document in the future. You know, although I might have missed my cue to give input, it appears to me at least four other people here also missed their cue. Uh, now, I'm not faulting anybody for that, uh, it's my own fault. But in the future, I think we should formalize this process a little more, so that we make sure we do get everybody's input, and that we have a healthy discussion, as I said before, about the whys and wherefore, so that when it does come time to vote on the document, and hopefully vote it all in at once, because, you know, everything's been vetted at that point. So I'm just looking for a, a process that will, you know, speed this up and make it more efficient. And I think that's something that we need to, to look at, uh, in the future.
I think we can, or I, I think potentially the, the council of 2020 will be able to take up, uh, you know, their, their governance policy as well. I'm, I'm hoping we're not gonna, we're not gonna change ours again unless somebody finds an issue with it and wants to bring it forward.
Why can't, why?
Can I speak?
Well, yes, Donna.
Well, if I'm, if someone else is before me, that's fine.
No, you can go, fine.
I, I, I don't see any reason why not to work on, maybe Steve could work on some language to put into our town council governance policy as to what he was speaking to. I don't know if he would be willing to do that.
It would be totally well...
You've been fallen told, my friend.
Yeah, it would be totally well...
I haven't helped.
I, I have to make this suggestion. I think that, um, it would be good to adopt the policy that whenever the council discusses its policies, it does so at the end of the agenda.
You would like that, wouldn't you?
Second.
Okay, so, in that case, um, in that case, any counselor who has a suggestion is welcome to bring it forward, um, and we will move on to item E, Town Administrator Reitzma, Request Approval of Amendment to Contract for Renewable Energy Services, Net Metering Credit Sales Agreement with CareSight Solar LLC, and Authorization to Sign Amendment Contract.
I've been waiting patiently to talk about this. The, the information is in the packet for members of the audience who don't remember what this is about. This is about a contract we have for renewable energy services, specifically solar energy-related services, whereby that energy is generated somewhere else, not even in town, uh, but we benefit from it by getting, uh, credits, uh, for, uh, that energy. The state provides the credits and we benefit from that. We have the contract already that was approved. The only thing that's happening here is a relatively minor amendment resulting from the fact that the school department now has joined in this, uh, initiative, and thereby the amount of energy that's, uh, at play is much bigger, which allows the company that we have the contract with to improve the discount rate that we're getting. And so it's gone from 28 to 30,000, to 30 percent, sorry, uh, for both the town and the school department. So I strongly recommend that you ratify, or allow me to, uh, sign this amendment.
Madam President?
Yes, John?
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve, uh, the proposed amendment and authorize the administrator to sign said contract.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion? I have one question. Yes, okay.
Not only myself, but the, uh, the consultant that had reviewed the initial contract.
Any other comments or questions? Will we be giving it to permission with the motion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
DPW Director Richard Rogers, Request Approval to Sign New Three-Year Contract to Continue Service with Waste Zero, per the attached contract.
Good evening. Yon and Gio might also have comments, but basically I would request approval, uh, to sign the contract based on Yon and Gio working out any details, because there has been feedback from Yon and Gio on some points in the contract, and we have sent a, an email to Waste Zero with our comments, so there'll be some back and forth on that.
The basic, um, what this is all about is we've, we have currently a contract with Waste Zero, they supply, uh, the bags, and they administer in some way the pay-as-you-throw program for the town. This would allow that, uh, to continue, they just had new contract language, uh, and that raised some questions for the solicitor and myself that we wanna see addressed, but the, the nature of the contract is, is the same, essentially.
May I ask one question? When is the existing contract expired?
It did.
It did?
Yes. It expired, I believe, in 2017, and it was started in 2011. It was renewed in 2014, if I'm not mistaken, and expiration date was actually 2017.
Madam President?
So how we've been doing this?
Has there been any discussion with them about the quality of their bags?
Yes.
There's, there's tons of complaints that I get every day while I'm walking around town about these bags, and I have to say, these bags are poor, poor quality. I understand they're supposed to be more recyclable or whatever, but I mean, I, just tonight, I opened them and the whole thing fell apart. The whole white just fell apart on me.
They, they do occasionally have bad batches, they have modernized their equipment. My personal experience is we do get phone calls, and Waste Zero will replace them. And I have, thank God, had not had a lot of problems over the five or 10 years that we've had them, myself, and I obviously been using them, uh, but I don't, I don't have a cure-all for the bags, but Waste Zero will replace defective bags.
Are there other companies that make these bags?
It doesn't seem to be anybody around that does all the services that Waste Zero provides. It's not just a manufacturer of the bags.
If I may just add to that, um, the new contract does refer to Waste Zero taking on the obligation to, you know, look for the best possible quality. The flip side is that the stronger the bag, the longer it lasts. And so it's, it's a sensitive balance that they're, they're trying to strike.
You can't put 40 gallons of trash in a 33-gallon bag, that's your first problem.
No, no, I just took it out of the roll, went like this, and, and the straps fell off. I don't know what to tie it. I couldn't tie it.
It was that recent?
There was nothing in it.
Was that recently?
This was today.
Yes, because we actually had a, uh, lady come in, an elderly lady, and she brought them in. Waste Zero has a toll-free number that they can call, but she actually came into DPW, and the white strap wasn't even, even attached to the bag. So we did replace those, and we send them off to...
I'll be there tomorrow.
I'm sure you get defects, it's like anything else.
Madam President?
Yes, John?
I just have a question for the solicitor on this. So, does this fall under single-source vendor, and what is the, is there a total contract amount that we have to, that would force us and necessitate us to go out to bid? I'm just, I didn't see any total contract value or anything of that, of that nature in here, and I'm not sure that...
Yeah, I, I believe the administrator has, has determined this is the only game in town.
Okay.
And they are, and I, I can be corrected legally, but they are on the NPA for, for mass, which is an acceptable, uh, way to select.
Thank you, just checking.
Thank you.
Any more comments? In that case, do I have a motion, but this would be pending the satisfactory resolution of...
Yeah, I think we need to agree that it's, the language is acceptable.
I'll make that motion.
Pending the resolution...
Pending resolution, it'd be Gio and the administrator.
Second.
Thank you. Oh, I'm right here.
Don't go away. DPW Director Rogers, Request Permission to Transfer $3,000 from the Minor Equipment Replacement Account to the IT Computer Services Account.
Yes, uh, and that is to cover shortfalls for the equipment scanner software, yearly updates, and the regular, uh, service calls that we make to the town IT contractor. The, when the budget was made, I thought I made it sufficient, but I did not. The software, uh, for Mitchell is about 4,700, and the yearly updates for the scanner are about 1,800. And we do obviously periodically need Dave and Alia, or his helpers, to come in, so we're, we're currently in the red. Although, we haven't actually paid the $1,800 yet, which, what is due.
Madam President? I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve Director Rogers' request to transfer $3,000 from Minor Equipment Replacement Account to the IT Computer Services Account.
Second. Any other comments? All in favor?
Thank you.
Counselor Driggs, Confirmation of Elected Town Council's August 18, 2019 Landfill Process.
So, you'll notice throughout the body, um, Jeannie corrected me, it's, it was the August 13 meeting, which is obvious, um, and in the body it says that, so I just wanted to make that clear. The reason I'm bringing this, um...
Counselor Driggs, could you, yeah, thank you.
The reason I'm bringing this forward is I'm frankly, I, I'm a little miffed about what's going on. As I understand it, we've now, we're, we just are having a, or scheduled a public hearing on landfill options for December 3, and it was my understanding that the town council, this had been dealt with, um, so I went back through the, through the recordings of both the PARE workshop and this special meeting, um, that, where Yon presented a memorandum on August, dated August 8th, the meeting was August 13th, and where the PARE basically went through PARE engineering at the workshop, and by the way, both the workshop was publicly advertised, and obviously the August 13 town council meeting, so the public was notified of landfill action that the town council was considering. And at the August 13 meeting, um, Yon presented a memo that, and he specifically said he did not want to repeat, go through all the information provided by PARE, and everybody seemed to agree that the only reasonable option at this point for the landfill, um, in terms of the options that PARE was giving, was to continue the curbside pickup, but there were some other items that needed to be, um, determined in terms of how to handle certain recycles, recyclables. And it was at... be determined in terms of how to handle certain recycles, recyclables. And it was at that point that Yon requested that the council will hopefully be able to make at its August 13 meeting, so that staff, the decisions the council will be able to make, so the staffing consultants can move forward with several tasks that need to be completed in no more than one year. And he, along with the DPW director, were going to be exploring various levels of service options for curbside pickup, and explore, but the decision was definitely made, and the vote was unanimous. And I was also struck during both the meetings, nobody ever brought up the idea that there had to be a public hearing, that the town council could not take a vote or make a decision until there was a public hearing. No one even mentioned a public hearing at either event. So I'm, I'm not quite sure. I know I was quite disturbed during this past election cycle, where, you know, one of the allegations was that this council had not done anything with landfill. And I kept thinking, the town council made a unanimous vote to do something about the landfill. So that, that was just a lie. So I'm not sure why we're having a public...
And I don't think that, I don't think it's appropriate to report the things that lies.
Fine. But we did, in fact, make a vote on landfill, a unanimous vote. So my question is, to Yon, you certainly expressed sort of an exigency to get going on exploring this, and you were going to be reporting back in one or two months, and now we're talking about having a public hearing, the purpose of which, I'm not sure what the purpose is, and it's going to delay, I just, I don't understand it. So that's why I'm asking why we're doing this, that we did make a vote.
I could try to respond, if you would like me to. I think you're correct in terms of what happened previously, that, you know, we had a fairly detailed presentation, and then a request by me, essentially, to the council, can you please make the following decision, so that we have direction, how we can move forward. My interpretation of why a public hearing is recommended is to make sure that we have more public awareness, if you will, than we saw evidence of during these previous events. And, you know, this is typical, you know, it's like, you don't hear from the public sometimes until the trucks show up, or until something has been changed. And the council had wanted to really make sure that we made another effort to reach out to members of the public and say, "Hey, this is going to happen now. It's a big decision. There's a lot of financial considerations," and therefore, have another opportunity for people to, you know, get the information and speak out about it.
Well, that's very different.
I don't think it's meant to necessarily revisit decisions that were already made.
Then I think calling it a public hearing, if you want my opinion, I think that's very misleading, because most public hearings are for the public to give input, and then the town council considers their input and takes a vote.
That I don't have comments on. You need to talk to...
Okay. I mean, why not call it a public information gathering?
Can I just ask the administrator perhaps to clarify, just for the sake of the discussion? Does, does he, is he still proceeding under the approved memorandum from the prior meeting in terms of moving each item forward?
Yes, we are.
I, um, I do believe that this is appropriately a public hearing. I also know that when we discussed this in August, there are several components of this to which we still don't have answers, or have prices, or know what we're going to do. And I will say that, on the record, I, I definitely, sitting through those at the time, talked about the fact that we need to have public hearings on this.
No, you did not. I'm sorry. You did not.
Excuse me, excuse me, I, excuse me, I have the floor. But I, I did say that, excuse me, I have the floor, please, that I did say that I thought that we should get this out in front of the public, we should have public meetings, we should make this known to people. And, and we don't really have all of the answers. We had a, I don't want to call it an interim, that's not the right way to put it, but based on what we had in front of us and the information that we knew, we chose a path or a direction. None of that is cast in stone, first of all. Very few people were at those meetings. I mean, I don't even know if anybody from the public got up and spoke with them.
Barbara Pelletier did.
Thank you, Mrs. Pelletier did. So that one person in the community actually got up and weighed in. I would, I feel strongly that we should let the public know what the various options are, what they're going to cost. Hopefully, we'll have some more answers to some of the questions that we didn't have before, about what, you know, sort of, I think, what we're going to do about this thing or that thing. And I, for one, I do want to hear from the public. I do want to hear what the citizens think about what we should do about trash once the landfill closes, and what their opinion is. I, I want the public input.
But, I...
Denise, Denise now has the floor.
Um, yes, Nancy, there was a decision to follow these recommendations, but I think the public has every right to hear what those decisions were. Also, we really do need more specifics on this. We still don't know the cost, and we, there was a plan, and we, and I think we need to know how the plan is doing and what this is costing. Keep in mind also, budget season is coming. I think it's very important that the public knows what those line items will be before we do it, and that the Budget Committee knows. So I don't think it's a bad thing to say to the public, "This is what we decided to do. We're going to do a recycling center. We're doing this, we're doing that." And I don't think it's a bad thing to let the public know, because no one came to those meetings. There were one or two people there. I think that, it's not that we're going to change our decision, but it's just so everybody knows what our decision is, and they're prepared for it, and they know what the budget line items mean at the end. And I think that there's nothing wrong with keeping the public well-informed all the way through this process.
Madam President, can I just, on a point of order, can I just interject briefly? I, just going back to my initial list of three or four items, really should have included one more, which is that Roberts' rules greatly frowns upon discussions without a motion. And there is a reason for that. It's to keep the agenda on track. And, and, and this is not directed at you, Counselor Maderas, but...
No, but does this need a motion?
Well, that's, that is a great question.
It's a good point.
I'm not sure if there is one.
Is Mrs. Driggs wanting to make a motion?
I, the motion I would make is that, because, and the reason that I'm doing this is because I'm hearing two different things. I frankly agree with Councilwoman DiMaderas. I have no problem with the public being informed about the decisions the town council has, has already voted on and made, and where we are in those decisions, and what it's going to mean for them. No problem with that. I do have a problem calling it a public hearing with the suggestion that they are going to be able to give input into what we're doing. We're revisiting something that we've already done. So I would ask them, my motion would be that we rename whatever this thing is on December 3 as a public informational hearing on the status of the council's decisions on landfill.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Madam President?
There's a motion and a second. Discussion, Mr. Ed.
Sure. I'd just like to say, you know, first off, I think if it walks like a duck and it talks like a duck, it's probably a duck. That being said, as I read through the administrator's memo, it seems like there are a lot of questions still to be answered here, and a lot of decisions, quite frankly, that need to be made. You know, for instance, you know, we look at Section 2, where it says, "At a town-operated recycling center, where B, preferably on a site that can accommodate yard waste, as well and/or a future transfer station if necessary, preferably on land already owned by town, but considering privately-owned land if necessary." I, I mean, even that right there, for instance, let's say that we come down to the point, the administrator has no choice but to come back and say, "The only way this is going to work is if we do it on, privately on land, and we have to go out and purchase some land." I would think that the general public would want to weigh in on whether or not, you know, that's an option that we should move, we should, we should take going forward, and if that expenditure of funds is worth it.
If I may, I think that the truth is not even in the middle, it's on both sides. You know, decisions were made, but the decisions reflected that a lot more decisions needed to be made. It provided us with the requested direction and guidance, so that we could actually use the time and make some progress. Hopefully, we will be able to provide additional information. We've been trying to get it. It's been very hard, in particular, from the hauler. But clearly, the memo reflected that some of these things needed further work to finalize them, and also to finalize the proportions of, you know, what goes through curb cut versus drop-off at the recycling center, all of those things. And, you know, one of the hardest pieces is actually finding a site for the recycling center. So that requires an update at the very least. And a lot of these things have their own financial consequences, or taxpayer consequences. And so, to me, it does make perfect sense, you know, to have another public hearing, to bring the additional information, hopefully, to the table, so that the council can, you know, further fine-tune these decisions. It's not, I believe, revisiting the basics. It's just finalizing the decision.
Can I just, I believe the motion is simply to change the name of this event to public informational hearing. Is that correct? So the debate really should be limited to that component?
Okay.
Madam President, as I recall, and my memory's not that good, because I'm old, but we...
Stop it, Joe.
We only voted on whether we were going to have a town-operated recycling center or not that night. That was something we had to vote on that night, so we could go ahead with everything else. That's the only thing we voted on that night.
No.
No.
That I recall.
You voted to do direct haul to the landfill.
Yeah.
And to continue the drop-off services.
Yes.
Right.
The curbside pickup.
Right. But that's what I recall. I don't recall anything about a public hearing or anything like that. That's all I recall.
Okay, so anyone else?
There wasn't any mention of a public hearing, because the PowerPoint and the engineers being here was supposed to be informational, sort of a hearing. Anyone could get up. I don't have a problem having, having this, but it, it, it just needs to have the name changed, so that it's not like a public hearing, thinking that they're going to choose what they're going to do for trash.
Call a question?
There's a motion to call the question.
There is a motion to call the question, although I, second.
Did you have more to say, Donna?
No, because he likes to shut me down, so, go ahead. Shut me down. It's okay. It's fine.
He called the question?
Wait a minute.
We're not talking about the name. I don't think you can say, "He likes to shut me down."
He does it all the time. It's fine. I'm fine with it.
There's a motion to call the question. If there's no objection, the chair can proceed with a question.
What was the motion?
Or if the chair, if the chair's discretion, the chair has comments to make. The chair can also choose to do that.
My motion was to change, instead of calling it a public hearing, call it a public information hearing, to, to tell the public what decisions are being made, have been made, and are continuing to be made. And if they want to put input, fine, but I, I think the minute, if I hear there's a public hearing, that's telling me that the town council wants my input, so they can now vote on something. And PEAR Engineering gave, and I think Yon ended up agreeing with them, gave several options, you know, whether you have your own recycling center, whether you have your own transfer station, all that kind of stuff. And, and we went with the, we, the most cost-effective was the curbside pickup.
What the motion was. That's what she's telling me. She's telling me what the motion was.
So we have a motion?
We have a motion, but I am going to make a comment, and, and I'm going to say this. I would like, I think it should be called the public hearing exactly for that reason. I think there are, because the public understands what a public hearing is, and it means we want to hear what they say, and yes, they have input. We are a long way from having all the decisions made on this. We are a long way from even knowing exactly what, what it's going to cost, and having put the full costs in front of the public. And yes, it's entirely possible that when those costs come back, or when we hear from the public, that we may rethink some of those preliminary-level decisions that we made. So I feel strongly we should call it a public hearing, so that the public knows that we are not only inviting them to hear the information that we have, we are asking them to tell us what they think, and to be part of this decision-making process.
And I guess, Madam President, can I just, one other thing?
No, there is, there is a motion to move the question, and a second on that. All in favor to move the question?
To move the question?
Yeah, which means no more discussion.
The vote, to move to a vote.
So there's a, there's a motion and a second on, you have a motion and a second on the table?
Yes.
All in favor?
Of my motion?
Of your motion.
Yeah.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Matt, Jack, can I just remind you that we had put off...
Yes.
I did, hopefully not to Counselor Edwards' chagrin, use my phone to look at a few other components.
I was watching you.
I knew you were, sorry. A few other components of the relevant state statute. The, in particulars, around general law is Section 5-5-3, the proceeding section to the license application component, actually states very clearly that the applicant must be a U.S. citizen. It doesn't qualify any further than that. So, although I believe that the language that was raised by Counselor Driggs is confusing because of the principal place of business language, I don't see any state regulation that would further define principal place of business. I think the relevant case law that defines principal place of business is not necessarily relevant to this type of license. And given that the state statute opens this to any U.S. citizen, I don't believe that there's any intention to discriminate against those who might not be residents of Tiverton. So I don't see any reason for you to hold this application up. And I believe, you know, that the only question you might have for future consideration is whether, you know, you, you might expect somebody who has this type of license to have a place of business in Tiverton, or at least some agent address. I would assume they would have to register with the Secretary of State and have a registered agent. That, that, you know, that might be under other authority aside from yours, appropriate for them. But that aside, I don't think that interferes with your ability to approve this license.
So Geo, would he then be authorized to be a private detective throughout Rhode Island?
Yes.
Not just Tiverton?
Correct. And I just add, most states don't do it that way. Most states have a state-wide licensing authority. I'm not sure, you know, why the handful of New England states probably were just special that way, you know, do it this way. It's not typical nationally to leave it to local authorities.
In that case, is there a motion to approve the private detective license for Mr. De Gahl?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Good thing you didn't wait.
Town Administrator, any announcements? Jeannie, do you have any announcements on behalf of the clerk?
I don't.
Solicitor?
Only, just to point you to, an email that hopefully you receive today, or will receive shortly, we did get a response on the public records complaint from Mr. Tom Buchanan, from a couple of months back, finding that we in fact violated the APRA because we were a couple of days late in delivering the documents. There was, as you may recall or read from the decisions, some confusion as to a number of similar requests. I would only add, in our defense, you know, this is the town's defense, that this was one of the most complimentary, you know, findings of fault that I've ever seen out of the Attorney General's office. And, and I believe it took all about three minutes for us to respond to them, that yes, in fact, we had violated the OMA, or cured it as quickly as possible, but it was an oversight.
Is there a fine attached to this?
There is not. And, and, you know, I would, I mentioned this, not just to sort of, you know, parade myself to some extent, but also to just remind the council that I think it really is appropriate to make some decisions in the near term about management of APRA requests within the town. There are, there remains an opportunity for requests like this to fall through the cracks, and I think we, we're certainly not, you know, viewed as doing it intentionally at this time, but if it happens again, you know, they did know, they looked back 10 years to see if you've done this kind of thing over the last 10 years, in their finding of, you know, willful and known violation. So this is sort of like your, you know, speeding ticket, you know, good drive.
So this is sort of like your, you know, speeding ticket, you know, good driver record pass.
Madam President? Just for the solicitor on that note, I have not received it. I don't know if I was included in the email distribution.
So I, for your, for your benefit of yourself and Councilman Clark, I forward these off to Nancy, who I believe is not available today, so it, it will go to all of you.
It's N route.
And it always goes to all of you, all communications go to all council members from the solicitor's office.
Thank you.
Anyone? In that case...
Motion to adjourn?
Adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?